There we go. Okay. All right, apologies and thank you Christina for pointing that out. I just went over the agenda, which is if you looked on the website, it's, it hasn't changed any. All righty, so let, so I was asking if anyone that is online would like to make a comment at this time? We don't have anyone here in the room with us. Anyone want to speak? Christina, is your hand up to speak?
No, I'm so sorry. I was just saying everything was okay and I don't know how to get rid of the thumb, the thumb up.
Okay, thanks a lot. All right, well then let's move on to the appointments. We have quite a few of them tonight. Who would like to start us off with a motion?
Well, I move to appoint Joseph Petterina Petterino, Ashland, Hampshire, to labor driver position with the town of Carlisle, in public works.
Second. Any discussion about that? His resume, it was included in the packet. Hearing no discussion, we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Joseph Topol, eighty-one Greystone Lane, as a constable in the town of Carlisle with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion?
The bond paper was not signed, is that? Although it said it was signed on March twenty-third in the document, I was confused about that. Constable bond?
They're not on it.
Yeah, we're doing Joe Topol, who's the.
So you could, you could appoint pending signature on the bond and we'll make sure that it's done.
Okay.
All right, so I want to amend my motion. I move to appoint Joseph Topol, eighty-one Greystone Lane, as a constable in the town of Carlisle with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, pending signing of the bond paperwork.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
I have a question about the next one. Do you want me to just move on to the other ones and then we come back to her? Do you want me?
Sure, we'll go.
Okay, I move to appoint Jean Delano, Delano, ten twenty-two West Street to serve as the town of Carlisle Animal Inspector with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? This is a continuation of his role. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
I think it was a continuation of Joe's role as well as constable. Constable, I think, as I'm in Carlisle. I move to appoint Deborah Toher, five thirty-six Curve Street to serve as the town of Carlisle Animal Inspector with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. And this is a continuation for her as well. Any discussion?
It's not, this is not about her, but why are we doing this now and why don't we do this in June when we do all the other appointments? Automatically.
It gets us in trouble last time, right? Because, because we were appointing different people at different times and we didn't know who we had appointed when.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with you.
Oh, oh, okay, yes.
These two are employees that were recommended by the Board of Health. So they're not volunteer or, or other appointments, they're, they're employees, town employees.
Because as we look at the list, we just need to make sure that we know that they've already been reappointed, so we don't keep reappointing them.
Yep.
It was, last, last summer was, appointments was terrible.
Yeah. Well, we were, we were lacking our.
Yes.
We had a lot of friends, yeah, things in the works. All right, so back to.
Yes.
Colby Mock.
No, no, we haven't voted this one yet, because we were still.
I thought we just did.
Oh, it's the one that.
Didn't we just vote for?
We were, no, we have not voted.
Jean, we just appointed. We were.
We have not voted for Deborah yet.
We have first and a second.
Yes.
Yes.
And I thought I said any, oh, I see, you brought up the question before we voted. Okay. All those in, yep, we did that on purpose. All those in favor of Deb Toher, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that carries unanimously. So let's go back.
When I just, I don't see a recommendation from the Historical Commission.
Oh. They're the ones that forwarded this.
I did personally speak with Annette about this, but.
I don't know if it matters.
So there's nothing in here, huh? I didn't look to see if there was. Right? Well, what if we? I know from talking to Annette just the other day that they did recommend her, but should we do that?
When does the term start?
Out of the motion? I believe it starts, it looks like it's ending in twenty twenty-six, so I, this is to, right, this is to, because she and Chip are going off. They wanted to bring in her as an alternate now and then make her, take a permanent slot when they go off, is what she told me. But do you want to hold off on this, or?
I'm fine with it, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like it's only between now and July one.
Into June, right. So do you want to make the motion or have someone else?
I move to appoint Colby Mock, one eighty Concord Street to serve as the alternate member on the Historical Commission with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have a question since we're talking about the boards and, you know, appointments. Some of our, I, I noticed that we've started doing this must be a resident thing. Some of our, some of our committees and boards do not require you to be a resident. And so, just want to point that out.
Maybe when we get to that topic tonight, we need to make sure we, that, that's noted then.
Yeah, I think that we purposely did it on some committees because we thought it might be, there might be people who might be interested in helping do anything. I don't think it's ever happened.
So that would be in the mission or the charge?
Should be in the charter.
Yeah, in the charter.
We've actually, well, we've actually had people that were on a board or committee who have moved away from town but continued working on that board of committee because they, like, they moved to Concord.
Well, let's hold off on this.
That's, yeah.
This is a good topic for when we get to that later on the agenda. All right, so let's move on to the police chief contract. And Ryan, do you want to give us a brief update on this?
I just have a quick question about, about the appointments, if I could just ask the board while you're gathered here. So would it be beneficial for appointments like this to have letter of recommendation from, from the board itself? And then the, the term dates, I'm, I'm looking for what would make people more comfortable with the, with the appointments to make sure that's in your packet.
I think historically.
The draft that we're going to be discussing later on, you may not have gotten to that part of it, but, so let's, let's save it for there. No, but I mean, we, you know, he may not have been. No, I'm, but anyway, yeah, the good question, Ryan, and we will get to that. Okay, let's, so let's take a look at the police chief contract, which is in our packets. You want, and then.
So I'm going to.
Okay, here it is.
And just highlight some key changes from what you've seen. They're very, very minor, but I want to make sure that I'm pointing it, pointing them out to you. So the dates on here, the chief is actually beginning some of his initial employment, employment activities tomorrow pending your approval of this contract, which we, we can delay if you're not ready to approve this contract. So that's why the date is May tenth, not May fifteenth, but his actual first day of work here in Carlisle is May fifteenth to include his swearing in ceremony, which will happen at eleven o'clock here at Town Hall. Worked with council to clarify some of the language here about separation and about voluntary termination. It's, it just conflicted and it was confusing and we wanted to make the contract as clear as possible, but it did not have a lot of impact. Basically, what it says is you retain the right to remove the chief for cause. You retain the right to end the contract at any time with a six-month severance and if he is to leave the employment, he has to give us sixty days, sixty days notice.
This is not the version that's in our packet?
It's just slightly, slightly different. It's pretty much the same, just calling out the differences.
You're looking at the true one right now?
Mm-hmm.
And then Barney just pointed out that there was a, a date error in here and then I just wanted to make the language very clear in the spirit of negotiation, so I'll just read it to you. So for personal days, the employees shall receive two personal days. This is consistent with all town employees now. The employee will be given at the start of the contract, one personal day, so from May tenth till the end of the year, he can use one personal day. And then after that, every July one, the new fiscal year, he will get two, just like every other employee. And they need to be used by the end of the contract, which is May ninth, twenty twenty-six. So that's just clarifying language.
How does it work, Ryan, with his vacation accrual? Does it start now or?
His vacation accrual will start now.
Why does he need the person?
Because he won't accrue. It's just a sign of good.
It's not an accrual, it's just a.
Ask for it?
No. We, I haven't shown him this, so we can take it out.
There's only a couple of other days he had. About six weeks.
He didn't ask for it, I included it.
I'm fine with it.
I think that's fine. I'm fine, but I think it's clear. And it's not like an accrual, it's a, you know, otherwise earning, yeah, yes.
So the. The, the main highlights of the, the contract for, for public purposes, if the public hasn't seen this, this was done in negotiation, is a salary of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with a small merit bonus if he meets expectation on an evaluation, which is spelled out in the contract that it is required and is significant, the evaluation of the chief by the select board annually. Four weeks vacation, which is a standard. It is. I think it's twelve fifty or fifteen hundred, I just have.
I thought, I thought it was a thousand.
Thousand.
That's a thousand, okay, I thought you were pointing out a change, sorry.
There it is, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, four weeks vacation, which is pretty standard for, for this level of, of position. And then entitlement to insurances and we tied most of the fringe, or if not all, the fringe benefits to the personnel policies with the exception of some things that are reserved for public safety officials like phones and cars, or a car, not cars.
Can you go over the termination notice business?
Went to sixty days instead of six months.
If he quits, he has to give us sixty days.
Yes.
We notice him, we have to give him six.
If you notice him without cause.
And if we don't, we renew him. If we don't, if we opt not to renew at the end of term, that's that, we have to tell him that. Eric, could you get closer to your mic?
If we opt not to renew at the end of the term, how far in advance we have to indicate that?
There was some back and forth, so I'm just confirming that it is. Six months, so we have.
We need to tell him six months ahead of time.
Yes.
Otherwise, it would automatically renew for a year anyway.
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. And I noticed three-month reviews, it seemed like pretty frequent. The review period?
So we discussed regular meetings between the chief and myself. We talked about meeting every three months, it doesn't have to be a.
Well, let's look at the language of the contract, please. I'm okay with it, I just want to make sure we, we are prepared for that.
Attempt to hold discussions.
Attempt to hold. My wife lawyer would poop on that.
Three months, right, schedules permitting.
Agree to agree. I think we should be, we should be clear, like, what do we want? And then we should not say attempt to hold, we should decide what we want. Do we want like six-month review annual? I think three months is too frequent frankly, but.
Below that is the formal review.
Right, we're just on the annual.
Who are the parties? Who, I mean, I know who he is, but are we the other party or are you the other party?
Uh, it's you and your delegate, which is me.
So it would be you. So you were going to attempt to hold discussions. Why don't you just say shall hold?
And you could make it just shall, um, hold discussions on the police chief's performance periodically.
Right.
Period.
Well, no, that's too, no, I would, I, I wouldn't, I would not support that, but I'm okay saying you guys will check in every three months. That's not unreasonable, the TA and the police chief.
We do it anyway.
Two most important, you know, positions, well, maybe two of the three most important. And then we will have our annual, right? So that, I'm fine with that. I just, I don't like agree to agree clauses, let's just put it that way.
Everybody else fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on this? Anyone else have questions about the contract? Comments?
Changes, Ryan?
Yes.
All right, well then I'd like a motion, which is on page thirteen, to approve.
To approve and execute the employment contract between the town of Carlisle and Andrew Amendola for the position of chief of police commencing on May tenth.
This needs to be the tenth, right, not nine?
Uh, May tenth.
Motion? Wait, you want it today or you want it tomorrow? I'm asking Ryan. This says May nine.
Either is fine, but the tenth is more accurate.
Okay.
And expiring on May ninth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. I'm seconding May tenth.
That's what I said was.
I know, I'm just underlining.
Well, sorry, to, not to be technical, but you said expiring on May ninth, but you meant expiring on May tenth then, right?
Yes, it always expires.
You're gonna make, okay, so you're gonna make it May, May ten at the start and end on May nine? Okay, just checking. Okay, everybody clear on the motion? And we got a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you and welcome to our police chief. All righty, let's move on then to. Town meeting review, what are we doing next? So last night, we had our ten, annual town meeting and I thought we had a pretty good turnout, all things considered. And so we have a little time here on our agenda to just give some initial feedback and review. Anybody want to lead off with comments? Observations?
Um, I, I filled out the survey that Wayne, did anybody?
I didn't get it.
I didn't receive it.
Well, you had to, you had to email him, yeah.
We have to email him to get the survey?
Yes, you did make an announcement, I actually.
Collected.
All right, all right, I gotta note that, email, email.
So one of the questions on there was, because when I looked at, yes, it was a good turnout, Barney.
Better than expected when you.
When I looked out at the sea of faces, there were a lot of gray heads.
Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding.
And that, you know, but, and then I happen to know that one person had to leave early because his babysitter was turning into a pumpkin.
How did you know that?
Because he told me so. His wife.
Pathetically?
No, no.
No, it's probably Brian.
It was Brian, yes.
You know what, they're only, they're only two, two young, I would say young, younger.
Well, below ARPA age, it was like.
Below ARPA age, right, so one of the questions was, should we continue doing these on weekday nights or should we have them on Saturday morning?
ARPA, you're right, ARPA.
I'm listening, Kate.
I'm sorry, nobody else, sorry, I have a similarity setting in it.
Well, one of the questions was, should we be continuing to do Monday nights or should we consider Saturday mornings? And I personally voted for the Saturday morning because I think, and I think we should be providing some robust childcare and, which would be then more possible as well. And people are not going to be turning into pumpkins and having to rush home to get their kids to bed. And hopefully, that might, you know, incentivize some of the younger people that have school-aged children to come because this, you know, two-thirds of the budget is a school and there are things that affect them.
I think in, in the past, I totally understand what you're saying. I think in the past, we have provided some childcare for those where there were issues that we knew that, I think it's something we should consider doing all the time. What I worry about moving it to a Saturday is you're going to lose people for different reasons, right? You know, so they're going to be off at soccer.
You're a long ways from having kids.
And so I think Saturdays could be.
Those are just hard.
Um, you know, making, maybe it, you know, I think we talked once about making it earlier, but then we decided, no, that's kind of like right in the middle of dinnertime.
Well, David has a high schooler, I still have a, right, and I still have a high schooler.
Two.
Two, and I have a high schooler as well, and I will say, I'm not sure that Saturday is going to be effective for what you're trying to do, because I think sports and activities are so.
Saturday is worse.
Saturday is worse. I think you have a bigger, the town and society has a bigger systemic issue of participation in civic engagement. And I don't think that adding childcare, we have gone, I think, we have many steps in place already. We're reaching out into the community last night, they, you know, and I don't know the backstory, but, you know, going into, you know, another, I guess, residence, even though it's a, you know, to, to get people to vote, I think that's great. But of course, I was thinking about it relative to, you know, how did you pick that particular residence? And is that fair and equitable to everyone in Carlisle as well, because they didn't come to every other residence? But I do think that there's a, you know, somewhat, I wouldn't say there's apathy and I think that if there's the right, not the right, if there are issues that people care about, they come. But for the most part, I think that, and this is just my talking to some of my peers as well as people who are younger than I am, because on my particular street, there are quite a few young families and encouraging them to come to last night's meeting. And there just wasn't that kind of interest to do that, just with all the other commitments. So I don't know how we can fundamentally change that tide, but I, it concerned me last night and I sat there. Barney, you started by saying you thought it was a good attendance, all things considered. I've been to town meetings for twenty years now and I thought it wasn't particularly good. I, I thought it was, you know, and I know you were thinking because of COVID and come, you know, all the changes that have happened, but I just think it's waning and it's unfortunate. So I don't know, we should talk about if there's.
I, I completely agree with Travis and I, two, I'll give you two pieces of information. So one is I mentioned that same, you know, the graying of the audience, which has always been there, but it was extreme. Most means, I mean, like, the last twenty of them, I think. There's a sprinkling at least of parents, right? Now, Scott Triola, um, told me, and unfortunately, public media, so he's outed here, but he said, you need to put in an issue, like a hot-button issue that activates that group, like something about schools. And there was really nothing, I mean, maybe lighting, but there really was no hot-button issue that motivated them to.
Right.
So that's, you know, a piece of information, but I think more broadly, what struck me, and I did chat with Travis about this, is there were some really good civic discussions. Like, for example.
In previous meetings?
No, in the meeting yesterday, I mean, there was a really good one and it was short and it was good about whether we should do the senior tax rebate. You know, should the seniors who paid in for twenty years get a break, was one point of view? Should seniors not get a break, but maybe get a deferral, take advantage of that deferral program and not just get a freebie? I mean, that's a good civic debate. But it's buried inside so much claptrap. We have so much bureaucratic, process-oriented stuff we have to get through. And I don't, I wonder if, we should have a task force or we should just look at, what are the rules? Like, we have to wade through all that, because I think that's the distance center. You have to wade through all this nonsense and they don't have time. But if you could condense it to these good civic arguments, I think people would, you could get people maybe who are interested.
Or, you know, maybe you also, we think about changing the order of things.
We always do that, right? I mean, we've always tried to put like what we thought would be.
Right.
Draw towards the end of the meeting.
But maybe we don't, right?
She's saying the opposite.
I'm saying the opposite, is put it earlier, so that.
But then you have to worry about maintaining the quorum, right? Then if you have something.
You don't have to, I don't think, right?
Yes, you do. So as you get towards the, like, like last night, somebody could said, could have said quorum.
Sure.
Yes, everything would have stopped.
Yeah, because we lost the quorum.
Yeah, sure, we lost it.
Midway.
Yeah, we lost it.
But nobody challenged it.
And it's okay, as long.
You're vulnerable if there's a challenge.
Exactly.
Interesting.
Unless we do away with the quorum. Or make it.
We don't want to do.
Well, or make it significantly smaller.
I don't think we want to do that either. We, this is.
Want to go the other, want to go the other way, yeah.
We want citizens to be having a voice. We don't want.
I understand that, but it's always the same one hundred and twenty-five people that have got the voice.
At least we know, it's, it's a certain percentage of the, of the town. I would be very against.
It's a very small percentage.
I agree.
Yeah, I wouldn't either, want to do that either, but, um, so Concord had their town meeting on Sunday afternoon.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we've had any, well, I know my, my, because they had the middle school funding on there. My daughter and her husband went, I don't know, I didn't ask them.
They know, you know the point?
Concord has like fifty or seventy-five for their quorum. Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
But I'm just wondering if, we haven't been in touch with them about, with how they're finding participation.
We do, when's our next?
Have you?
Kind of checking, cheers.
Whether a Sunday afternoon would, would be worth trying?
Could do it anytime.
I don't know.
I, I, I agree with Travis. I think time of day is, time of day is a mechanic that we can handle. I mean, we are going to set a fall town meeting, so I guess we do have to start.
We have to.
Dealing with it. But in terms of process, I think we need to examine root cause. It's not Saturday or Monday night or Sunday afternoon. It's like, how do we engage the demographic where, I mean, I don't want to make maybe too much of it, but there is a broad shift and it will accelerate as the people age out of two career couples who are very busy with their children and don't really have, in my opinion anyway, don't have the time and are confident in a way. It's, it's, there's a piece that's good.
Right.
They're confident in the, in the stability of the leadership here, that's always kind of guided the town pretty well and believe it will continue. Against, you know, a very committed group that tends to skew older, that has the time and the interest to really think about and be motivated by some of these big issues like the culture we have here and the open space and so forth. And we're, you know, I just sense this divergence and we've got to figure out a way to bring it back in, I think. And that's really the main imperative we have to do, in my opinion, and then.
I wonder if it'd be worth seeing if we could get parents to do something, you know, maybe through the school, we could get some kind of a quick survey of, of existing, you know, say, middle school parents or elementary school parents, some way to get some feedback. Yeah, Ryan.
So just to inform the discussion, the cafeteria is supposed to be set up for, for families. It was, the idea is that they can go in there and, and let the children run around. This was communicated through the schools and then Aubrey did try to solicit anybody who wanted childcare per the select board's direction. There was one person interested and then they backed out. So the, there is another layer of this that we are willing and we're going to provide that care, but it wasn't taken up.
We used to give community service to, I don't know, was it upper middle schoolers or high schoolers who wanted to babysit?
We, we had the sitters. We did not have the people to take advantage.
So I think it's not for, but, yeah, look.
Well, I'm not the chair, the chair has elected.
Correct. One more night for me. John, yeah, sure, go ahead and introduce yourself and.
John Ballantyne, two sixty-eight Fifth Street. As I mentioned to you, I, I've been going to town meeting for thirty-five years and Ann and I spent a lot of time talking last night about it and this morning. And I guess I, if I share some, a lot of your concerns, I was a little bit underwhelmed by what happened. Also, given the amount of work that everybody has done in preparing for this town meeting, all the presentations that I discovered today that were on the website and I learned that City of the Woods was getting all these blasts. I don't happen to be on City of the Woods and then you have to kind of say, you know, how many click-throughs were there? For instance, I personally think you should be mailing this warrant to everybody in the town, eighteen hundred. I know there's a cost issue, but it's there, people look at it. And it used to be, and I've asked this before, that the, the schools used to make a presentation of what they're doing and it's sixty. Of what they're doing and it's sixty, over 60% of the budget, you can put the deck service in there. And so is there is not that in just in terms of information. And, you know, that's very important and you people say, well, it's just the town, it's who votes at town meeting. No, there are 1800 people that have to know that there's all this due diligence and we trust you. And so I think that's just a communication issue. The debate you're having is a debate that I've had. From the beginning with, uh, Doug Stevenson and Wayne and Tim Holt is to what extent you put forward. Are you talking about issues or to what extent are you just trying to push through the warrant and the budget and get approvals? I am more of like talking about the issues, for instance, the longer term tax impact and the facilities and all these things which were alluded to. But then not presented, you know, and so, I mean, what you're talking about these, the seniors, you know, everybody is concerned about that. And the, and Lynn kind of presented that, but then didn't go back and sort of say, here's what's happening. With our longer term issues of how do we keep, uh, the taxes going up no more than two or three percent or whatever. And that's a huge challenge and people care about it. And I know you also had the five year, you know, capital, um, uh. Expense, I looked at the presentation, it was there and there was a lot of work, but then that wasn't presented. And as you know, ARPA has been very important, um, in funding the gaps, which is, you know, if we didn't have ARPA. Then you would be having all these warrant articles and would all these issues been funded. So again. People in town meeting didn't know that. I kind of didn't really focus on what, how, how important, how critical. ARPA has been this kind of extra money that we got to come in and we've not had that freedom, you know, going forward. And it wasn't presented and that to me was a concern. Um, and I, and I, you know, how many people really know about that or read it carefully in the, in the mosquito? Yes, there are going to be the 10 or, you know, the 200 people that are involved, but. How do other people learn this information and then get involved in a discussion? I glean more towards, um, and then I know, um, towards how do we get a discussion around certain issues, whether it be housing or zoning? Or whatever, um, or the taxes and facilities. And I know that that's been very much the issue, what we want to get it done on one day. And have the, um, you know, have the warrant approved. So there's a real tension there. And I think the other thing that we, and I see this in our organization, just because of COVID. We have to find ways to rebuild the community and discussions. This is happening at Brandeis, you know, you, people don't see, haven't seen each other. And are just beginning to get back together. And, you know, I, you see somebody, oh, I haven't seen you. Well, for four years, three years. And it's kind of like, how do we do that? And how do we create more forums for doing that? And I, to me, town meeting was a great opportunity where you get people together to kind of communicate issues. You know what the issues are and here, this is what you're working on. And, and I think. Sometimes Wayne says, you're not supposed to kind of, kind of present that. I happen to disagree with that. It's just like, gee, we're wrestling with these huge challenges. We've done a lot with the, you know, with the master plan. But here are the three or four things that we're looking at going forward. And so I think that's the dilemma. And then people say, well, that makes the meeting go on too long and it makes it two days or whatever. So it's a tough balance.
I think I, I completely agree with you, John, a hundred percent. But I think, I think because it's all about. It's all about the participation, right? It's all about getting people engaged. And I think that. You know, I, I, but I think that it's not just at town meeting.
Of course.
Um, and, uh, you know, I feel like, like, let's look at the select board. Um, and, but I am going to get at, you know, it happened a little bit at town meeting. Um, we don't engage in discussion with anybody but ourselves. And so I think that we have discouraged people. From coming to the select board and engaging with us on the topics. Um, and, you know, and I know I've said this a lot here and I know that nobody else agrees with me, but I think, you know, we, we, we need. We need to, we need to be able to get input from people and have these lively discussions. And know that we've had the lively discussions. I think it's dangerous, it, I think that we should have, if people have questions. At the town meeting, we should, we should have them, but I think we should have already had those discussions. In this public meeting, um, with people and gotten their input as well. Um, I, I, you know, I think, I think that when, when we, when we try to just stick to our agenda and our timelines. I think that we are shutting people down. Um, it did happen a couple of times last night at town meeting where. People were shut down and they just, they gave up. And I, I just think, you know, we, we definitely want to stay on topic, but I also think. We want to encourage that participation rather than discourage it. And I think that, you know. I think that we've been discouraging it a little bit and, and we need to get back to getting people involved. If we want people to be involved at town meeting. They need to know that we want to hear them and, you know, and that starts with all of the different boards and committees that we.
But I guess, I, I totally agree that town meeting is the result of your. Years long or year long, at least marketing campaign, right? But haven't, I feel like we've tried to engage on issues more than my recent memory, actually. We, we've gotten a lot of, we, yeah, we've gotten a lot of issues out here.
Take the input at the beginning and at the end.
Oh, we've doubled the amount of time and people. I don't want to make excuses. I think at, at the base, you are completely correct. I just don't think we just, I don't feel like we're discour. We may not be marketing it enough. But I don't feel like we're discouraging. I ju, I don't feel that way. I also just want to say, I, I. You got to divide communication, which is more what I think we're, Nathan's going and I tend to side that. With when you're at town meeting, like the people who were there. We could have just gone blah, 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 blah. Like the people were already there. It doesn't really matter whether we, we should have probably. Maybe the presentations could be better or more thorough, but. They were already there. They'd already decided it was either worth, or they decided it was not worth coming, right? So. Yeah, I just don't want to mix the two issues. I mean, we got to get them there and to get them there, I think, going back to Nathan's point. It's more fundamental. We got to engage them in civics so that they want to be involved in town meeting. So that they feel like those issues are worth their representation.
There's another aspect, and so I talked to, I mentioned some people on my street and, and other residents, but, um, who are my age or even younger. And two of them said, well, can I get it on Zoom? You know, and they asked, and because. The mentality now is you go to your computer, you work on it, not, not everyone, but many professionals are sitting there throughout the day. And working on their computers. They pull all the information they get from their computer. They go to the town website, you know, it's become a lot more robust than it was. It has everything conveniently there. Um, but having that might be, you know, kind of a next step for how this transition happens. I don't know. I mean, it's something to think about.
The issue is about how people could vote, so.
You, you can watch it.
Right.
I guess the question is, do we care if they vote as long as they watch? They really want to vote, they can show up.
The, the problem is you can't vet, like, we can't vet that the people on Zoom right now are the people who they say they are. So you can't register them. That's the problem.
So you can't tell, but you could list, but we don't zoom the meeting?
No.
It is live streamed. It was.
It was. That's true. That is live streamed. Yeah, by a minute.
Do we know how many people got on? Like, we know right now, there's like, you know, 10 people or something.
Um, so you can't tell who's watching the live stream on TV.
Ah, TV.
Um, they're, they're not allowed to come into.
Will we make it a Zoom?
There are dangers, but yes.
Well, it's something to consider. I'm not.
I heard you.
Yeah.
It allows the watching, you know, it wouldn't allow the.
Yeah.
For instance, I just, uh, finished up my classes and I was, and I do a lot of MP4 videos and other things and post a lot of stuff on the website. And I, uh, have my class, uh, you know, filmed it. So I said, I saw a check with IT and I say, well, how many people actually clicked and looked at things? And of course, the discouraging thing is, oh gee. Five percent if you're lucky and, and, and so, and that's.
Percent of what?
Looking at, looking at my, you know, five percent of my 50 students are click through and looking at, you know, I do all this stuff and extra work. And, and, and then, and then, and, and again, I looked at all the presentations, which I was not aware of until today. That was up on the website and that's, okay, I'm not in City of the Woods. And I said, wow, there's a lot of information there. How many click-throughs have been there? And the concern I had, particularly let's say around the schools, is if for some reason. Is we keep, we keep running into these sort of tax issues and everything else and people lose faith in the schools. As we know, those of us who were around before when the override failed, it's like, there's some disconnect and we get that sort of thing. That to me is therefore, we have not done that part of building the support for the school, the school and the faith and everything else that we seem to. We certainly have now. And that, that's the, the concern I have is, you know. And again, that's why I think doing the school presentation and have this, I used to love having the mailer. Because then you can look at it and read it. It talks about school performance. You say, oh yeah, of course we're supporting that. That's really important. And it's cut, you know, cognitively, we know that a physical item is, you're more likely to look at it, even if you don't read it that much. And that's, you know, you, you, it sits there on your, your counter for. A, a week or two and you look at it and say, oh yeah, they're doing good stuff. You see some graphs and, and that is, I think. I think the dilemma we have, I know there are cost savings and I know we're going more electronic and I really appreciate what has been done electronically. But it's kind of like. We may be there in 10, 10 years, but I don't think we're there yet as a town.
I agree. I would love to have the warrant book mailed out and the annual report mailed out.
Can I ask a question just because I'm?
Yeah, and I'm also conscious of the time. I'm sorry. I know, because this is the kind of discussion I want to have. And also I would like to let Tom Balata say something, but Ryan, go ahead.
We did mail a card that said. You can.
Yeah, I know.
So 10 people did have us mail it to their house. So the question I'm asking from a public administration standpoint is, how do we get you to think of the, that mailing the same way you do of the big book? Because my worry, this is just my public administration worry, is that the same amount of people read the postcard as read the warrant book. Then it's not worth it. But if you're saying that it's different or that if we put. The link on the top of the big book and people would go to the link, then that's worth it. And I don't know how to solve that.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to let Tom come up and make a comment. Come on up though, Tom, so people can hear you and introduce yourself and your street address, please. Thanks.
Tom Balata, Nathan Lane. Uh, one comment I want to make is I've been in town 42 years. And when I started, I had two young children and attended every town meeting. And if I, if, if one of us couldn't do it, at least one of us would come. And in fact, actually both of us came. And the reason was, things were actually done by the citizens at town meeting. Uh, typically you had the entire set of motions, but during the town meeting, there were two or three things that did not go according to script. And so I felt actually we're doing something here. Last night, uh, someone came up with, you know, 3,000, 4,000 on the youth commission. And in 20 years ago, 25 years ago, what would have happened then is someone would have made a motion. I want to propose that that number be $5,000 or something, and that would have likely passed. And I would have felt, okay, we were there and we made a change. That person was stifled, that person didn't even make the motion because they obviously. And what happened was look at the vote, about 22, I think it was 22 people actually supported not voting.
But actually, we made a mistake because we were supposed to clarify that ARPA had come in, right, with funding. It wasn't 3,000, it was whatever, because of ARPA, and it would have ended that debate if we had said it.
My point is that, um, if, I actually used to attend every town meeting the first 25 years and then I stopped coming. And I stopped coming for about 10 years. And it wasn't that I wasn't interested. I was feeling that basically, all that's going to happen is we're going to say yes to everything's there and I'm not really going to do anything. So I stopped coming for about 10 years, honestly.
Yeah.
Um, and if you don't feel like you're actually going to do anything other than just say yes to a bunch of stuff, it's not worth your time. Um, I do believe young people would come. I say, when, when we used to come, we used to have the, not only the courtyard sort of full. But the cafeteria cafeteria was full. And you, you, you want to get there early. We actually came, last night we felt foolish. We got here at 6:30. Because in the old days, you had to get here at 6:30, otherwise you wanted to be in the cafeteria and I wanted to be in the cafeteria. So.
You know, in my time as, on the service side of the equation. I view that as a failure. I view these, uh. Motions on the floor and things failing as our failure to not properly. Legislate basically the other 11 months of the year. We work hard and we collectively, you guys and we and Pinkcom and everyone, we work hard all year to try to get the right answer to an issue. To try to do due diligence and to try to properly. Fund or whatever, cost out, whatever it is we select. And I all, and this is my beef from beginning. People showing up at the end, and I realize this sort of counter to this notion of participation. But I like participation at this meeting. I like people raising their hand. I like John Labrie saying, this isn't right. You should do it this way. He's here in the trenches with us during the time that we're making the soup. When the soup's ready and we're doling it out and somebody says, comes in and says, well, I don't like carrots in my soup. Like, that's a waste to me because you come in at the end. So. I mean, I, I'm all about, I would really want more civic participation, but I really want engagement during the year, not at the 11.
Town meeting is the legislature. Think about the United States legislature. If the congressmen and senators didn't debate and actually have an impact on the legislation. Just because the president said, you guys are the president, you're the executive. An excellent.
No, that's not true. That's totally not true. They have committee and subcommittee meetings all year. That's not how it works.
Yeah, but the legislature is the, the body that gets together once a year.
Yeah.
We should get together every week or something.
No, I. I, I, Tom, I will, I think you are raising a really good point though about what, what is the purpose of town meeting? Because. You know, one, the old organizing rule of thumb is if you don't need to have a meeting, uh, then don't have a meeting. Do your business some other way. Well, people coming last night. Could say to themselves, what was the point of that meeting? It was, right to Nathan's point, it was all kind of worked out ahead of time. And we're just rubber stamping, uh, and, um. You, you know, what you're raising is that you felt that your vote made a difference. Right? When you, yeah, yeah. And so how do we, how do we both, um. Bring the work that we have been doing all year.
Much, I mean.
No, no, I get it. But, because I was involved in some of those discussions too.
And there were active discussions in town meeting and I sat there and learned something from other people and other perspectives and, and that was very. It felt good. I mean, you know, coming from New York City where you couldn't possibly get into any place, this was just a vital place where you had discussions.
Well, this clearly merits more discuss.
Yeah, let's not cut it off right yet. So I, I, you know, I, I agree with you, Tom, and I think, um. You know, David, I, I don't see it as a failure of us if. Something is controversial or if there is, um. Uh, if there's a change that happens, you know. So we miss something, right? Or, you know, that, you know, I think, I think that that flexibility is really what's incredibly important. Um, I think that the more people are engaged in these meetings, um, the more likely they are to go to the town meeting. Um, and so I think, I think we need to open this up and. Allow that engagement during these meetings and, and we'll learn then just how many things we can put on the agenda. Um, and we will have to keep it, you know, it's the, the chair's job to make sure that, that we do stay. Sort of on track, um, and, but, you know, it's, it's all about the participation that we get. We cut it off here. They're not going to come to town meeting. Um, they're not going to get involved in other boards. We're going to have a harder time getting people involved. Because we're not really getting them involved at this level even. Um, so, um, and we've heard from two people from the audience, should we ask if anybody online would like to say anything?
Sure. Uh, Debbie.
Hi, many, many years ago.
Hold on a sec, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself.
Oh, sorry.
The, what I'm supposed to be doing here.
Debbie Bentley, Heald Road. Um, yeah, long about maybe in the early 2000s. Uh, three, um, women, myself included, uh, prepared a report for the select board. On how to increase participation, especially looking at families. But one of the things we said is you should, um. You should look into allowing foreigners being allowed to vote. I mean, I think Carlisle's great because it allows foreigners to be on, uh, be appointed to committees, which many other towns don't do. But, um, if, you know, that is an option you have. I don't know, I don't think you're allowed. I don't know how you find out how many people are not Americans. Um, I guess the town clerk could tell you how many registered voters there are and you know how much population is. But, um, at the time that we, um, did, it was substantial. I mean, it was like 30% or 20%. Were not actually Americans at that point in time. Um, so you suddenly instantly cut the number of people that can, would go to town meeting. Because you haven't got a hundred percent of the population can't go. Just an idea.
Thanks Debbie. Anybody else that's, um, joined us remotely?
Hi, sure. It's Christina Christodoulopoulos, Hemlock Hill Road. Um, I, I think that, uh, if the. Residents had an opportunity to sort of, if they had input, um, as opposed to having to, um. Either do it first thing in the meeting or now wait till the very end. If there is a specific topic that they have input. That's on the agenda that they have, is something to, um, to say, I think that. Uh, it might be beneficial to provide an opportunity, um, to do so when that topic is being discussed. And not have to wait to the very end, um, or, you know. and not have to wait to the very end, um, or, you know, cram it in at the beginning.
Okay, thanks. All right. Well, um, I'm sorry to do this because this is a good discussion, but we've also got some media discussions further on the agenda. So, um, thank you both for your comments here too. We did talk, we, we do have a proposed date here for the Fall Town Meeting, which is a Monday, the date of October sixteenth. Do we want to hold off on voting on that to think about whether we might want to move it to a weekend or shall we go ahead? The, the reason we want to set the date is, um, we're not meeting again until June ninth and, um, thirteenth, sorry. Yeah, June thirteenth. So it's, uh, it's about a month, actually. Yeah, it's a month and, um, the, we, we heard from a couple of boards that were interested in preparing things for Fall Town Meeting. They really like to know if we're having one and what the date's going to be. So I'd like some input on, do we want to go ahead and set this date tonight? Uh, this has been cleared with the town moderator and the, um, town clerk.
So it's a Monday night?
Mm-hmm. Monday night, same time, seven P M, October sixteenth.
I would say ba- building on Travis's point as a parent of two kids still around October, May and October, like probably the worst two months in terms of school activities. May is like, everybody's trying to finish everything up and sports are act, and October is kind of the beginning of ramping up all this stuff. So I think in terms of getting parents of school-aged children involved, there's probably no good day.
Okay.
Having said that, it may be worth. I didn't mean that way. I mean, there's no, sorry, let me rephrase. There's no day where you're, can tell you're going to be free or that you'd be, you know. I'll stop there. But I think you raise a good point that we maybe need to think a little more. If, if you're not absolutely pressed to set it tonight, we may want to think about some stuff we need to do in the month off to try to maybe contact parents and have those conversations. Back with some information.
Uh, input from others here?
What, what would be on the agenda?
Well, we have some, a bunch of bylaw changes. There's probably going to be a CPA. Certainly the Gleason Library is talking about coming back with their application. And I believe the, um, Historic District. Historic Commission wants to bring something forward about the cemetery. We, we have talked about the town clerk, position by law.
And, and then, and also reviewing in the meantime, some of the other recommendations from the Governance Committee.
Task Force.
Task Force. They had recommended bylaw for the town administrator. And, you know, there were a couple that we said we would look at and we've put them, we've tabled them because we had so many other things. So we promised that we would at least try to look at them before.
And as we did last year, remember, we did set a date and then we concluded that we were not going to hold the meeting because we didn't have enough on the agenda.
Fine saying yes, we're going to have a Fall Town Meeting. I don't know that we need to pick a date right now. If you know that we're going to have a town meeting, I would be very uninclined to move it to a weekend or something, just on a whim, without having a, a lot of discussion and research into whether or not it's going to work or not that, you know. I think people are used to it being on a Monday night. And for us to suddenly change it to a Sunday night or something like that without any research could just kind of backfire.
The other thing I just want to add to that is on the Governance Task Force, one of the recommendations was to have a Fall Town Meeting. And the justification was it'll get higher voter participation or people, not voter, but the turnout because we have multiple times of the year and everything. And I'm not certain, based on what I was saying earlier, that, that that has anything to do with it. I think this is a bigger change. So I'm not sure, like to your point, i- i- time of day or, you know, when it is, it'll be interesting, but I think we really should, if we think that that is a rationale to have a Fall Town Meeting, we should keep some statistics on, you know, and, and track that as a board to really think about this, see if it works and see if there's higher participation of are the same people coming or are we looking for other people to come?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to, you know, we probably have the history of how many people have come to which town meeting and just look to see what was the draw? Because if it's personal bylaw changes and things like that, we don't have a draw. We're going to need to put something on there that's a draw.
Well, you know, one thing I've thought about is we were going back and forth just now is that, um, and we'd have to work this through with the moderator, but could we change, uh, an aspect of town meeting where we're going to have a business section? And then we're going to have a discussion. And one of the, and the discussion topic, right, is something really, uh, interesting, meaty, and that's controversial, right?
You could do that every Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'd do it in the spring because you need to.
We always have a lot of stuff, right?
Great suggestion, like facilities and all the different facilities that we're talking about. You don't have to necessarily be voting on things, but let's.
But yes, and get people's opinions and, yeah, exactly.
If you're not voting, I like that, then, you know, we could explore Zoom, not streaming, but Zoom with participation. You're not voting, you just raise your hand. They recognize, right?
Yep, yep.
I mean, I, I totally agree with Travis that the world's moved on, right? They're used to a remote. In-person without hybrid, I think is never going to come back. Like you, hybrid is, hybrid's here to stay. Work-wise, everywhere, right? So I think we should try to be more encompassing and I do like that suggestion. I'm not sure it's not bad even for the spring. It's just that the business section would be bigger. There could still be the, you know.
Well, you know, let's, let's think about that for the fall and we could try it out and see what impact it has. I would like, would like to go back though and say, we have been saying periodically in the last couple of months, we're going to have a Fall Town Meeting, we're going to have one, but we have not set a date and there are some boards and committees that are, really would like the date to be set. So if there's no objection to Monday, October sixteenth, I would like someone to move that as the date for a Fall Town Meeting. And we looked at the holidays on before it and then Halloween toward the end of the month.
Well, this is the week prior.
Yep, and, uh, and the town clerk and the town moderator think this is fine and, um, so.
I'm putting it, if I move that, uh, we set, uh, October, um,
Monday.
Monday, uh, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three is our Fall Town Meeting date.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Right. And, you know, it's not gravy and granite. It can change if it has to.
Right.
I think it's better to do it.
Yeah.
Get it changed it if we have to.
Yeah. This is, uh, this has been a good discussion. Thanks for your input, um, those of you in the audience or online. And, um, John, I'm going to have you take your seat back with the audience unless you are going to help Tom with the local hauler policy.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, you're going to talk facilities and that.
Not, that's coming next, after, after the local hauler policy. Yeah. Thank you, John. Okay. Yes. So Tom, thank you for joining us as the Chair of the Transfer Station Action Committee. And we have, the redlined version of the policy is going to be posted, uh, up online.
Finding it.
And apologies that it, that's not the version that got into the packet. But you received the redline version. Was it today or yesterday?
Today.
But.
This morning.
This morning.
Okay.
I'll go with the changes on that anyway.
Yeah, but we wanted to just get it up here because you, you had put those red lines.
Towards the bottom, the red lines, but.
Yeah.
Let me describe why we're here. Um, back in January, you talked about the local hauler policy. The strategy then was to have the Board of Health, do a permitting process to local haulers, which would incorporate the enforcement provisions. And we talked to town council and the Board of Health is not obligated to do that. Um, they can if they want. Uh, they have never done that and they don't intend to do that, uh, when I met with them a month ago. Um, they are obligated, interestingly enough, to, um, have a permitting or regulation process for people who move trash through town. And they're now exploring that. So not only the local haulers, but also orphans or any commercial hauler who actually moves trash through town is supposed to register with the Board of Health. They're supposed to have some regulations, for example, what hours you can haul trash and covered vehicles, you know, whatever. But they're exploring that because that's actually a mandate. They, they are not, it's not an option. They had, they have to have that. But they're, they can if they want, impose regulations on the transfer station, but they don't have to and they're not going to. The transfer station is a municipal facility under, uh, purview of the, of the select board and whoever they designate, which in this case is the DPW. So, um, in nineteen ninety and then last year, you folks updated the Carlisle Transfer Station Regulations. And that defines the DPW as the enforcement authority backed up by the Carlisle Police if they need it. And so instead of having a Board of Health permit, we took a recommending approach of a simple one-page policy that the DPW maintains with the enforcement provisions. Um, one reason we're not going with the permit process is that, uh, according to town council, we cannot have a permit process which grandfather's existing three haulers and doesn't allow new folks to come in. When the state does that, like for liquor regulations or something, they do that under statute. You don't have that ability. So they said, if, if you have a permitting process, it must be open to anyone, uh, unless you have some real rationale to.
But Tom, could you, could you open it to anyone but limited to three people? No?
That, that was a problem. So, uh, because we, we wanted to accomplish that and we cannot do that. They said basically, where you have a strong position, someday if you felt you needed to sunset this, you're in a very strong position to sunset this because of new D E P requirements and like, but that's not what we're trying to do. So basically what we've done is we've taken the provisions that would have been in the Board of Health permit and placed them into a DPW regulation or policy, which we have bounced off Ryan and James Hall and which they're support above. Um, it's essentially the same policies we talked about in January as part of the permit with a couple of exceptions. I did talk, talk with Nathan over the weekend. If you scroll down to the first red area. Yeah. Okay. So basically Nathan pointed out that we didn't have a remediation possibility. So if the hauler, went through the process and failed and was banned from the transfer station, we had defined how they might be able to recover that. And so we did add in the red language there, which basically says, just to review it, we've got a six-month startup, a transition period starting July one through December thirty-one, where no one's going to be banned. We're just going to be monitoring and hopefully getting them to recycle to the desired level. Um, starting in January one, serious enforcement begins and they'll be, and, and at that point, they're expected to comply with recycling. If they're not, uh, you know, James Hall is managing it. They get up to three notices and if after three notices, he'd have the ability to say, you can't use the transfer station anymore. He does, there's a ninety-day notice there. So they don't stop immediately, but they have ninety days to find alternative disposal means. This new provision says during that ninety days, they can propose a remediation plan, uh, to the DPW. And if it's acceptable to James Hall, he can extend that for ninety days to see if that's going to work. So that's what's been added in this, this draft.
Can I ask a question, Tom? So our system of government has checks and balances on everything.
Yes.
In this, it looks like the DPW director, they have to apply to DPW and then they appeal to the DPW director. What if they have a personal issue with the DPW director? Who do they appeal to beyond that?
It's, it's similar to, if you look at the Board of Health, because they, they regulate local haulers. I mean, their permits do, you know, they are, they're, they're permitted by the Board of Health. They have a multi-level process. At the end of the day, if you're unhappy with the Board of Health, the Court of Last Resort is basically the select board and then, you know, of course, the courts if they wanted, if they wanted to do that. But you know, typically, I mean, we could add in the select board as another authority to do that, but that's typically not, that's, you know, necessary.
We could just add to the, to the end of that, you know, you know, all appeals go to the select board.
Or.
Or the TA.
Well, I don't think you want to be the folks who evaluate the remediation plan, right? You want Jim to do that or?
No, no, I don't. That's why I said an appeal.
At the very end, we could give the.
Termination would be so disrespectful. Before we were, before we dive into the mechanics, you started this by kind of mentioning that if we had a permitting process, we'd have to open it to everybody. Why isn't, how is this not open to anybody that says I want the private haul?
Today, what we're doing, which is we don't enforce it, basically is open to everybody.
Right. So it is open to everybody.
It is open to everybody. But, you know, we, we don't advertise it. We don't push it. And so fortunately for the last forty.
Is it statutorily different? I mean, advertising is one thing. If you do a permitting process, how is it different if you have a regulator?
The difference with the permit is that the permit is a tangible thing. You know, so you get into the issue of, does that encourage more use? Without a permit, you've got an ad hoc process.
I mean, the economics of trash hauling in Carlisle are pretty thin. I can't see a ton of people wanting to jump in, but anybody who wanted to jump in even now could jump in.
That's true for forty years and it's been.
So I, I don't see that changing. I guess, uh, my concern is that, and, and partly it's your, I think it's good reg. I mean, I generally, I want to say I'm in favor of it. I think the changes are good. But we, we use and even you do it like capital P, private capital H hauler. That's like a legal term, but it's never defined. And then somewhere it's lowercase. I think we have to be pretty clear upfront. Who qualifies as a local hauler? Can I take my Tesla and cart trash and call myself a local hauler? I mean, what's the thing that makes you a local hauler? And then I, I kind of think you're going to end up in a permitting process. I don't know how you can back into it this way.
You see, I view it as an enforcement issue. We have a regulation. The regulation is very specific. Any resident is allowed to bring their trash, if it originates in Carlisle to the transfer station and, and the recycling that, and that.
Why did they've gotten a sticker?
That's right. And basically, the state, uh, D E P specifically does not want us inspecting their bags. They don't expect, expect us to inspect individuals bringing their things. They have that in regulations. They don't want us to do that because they understand politically that would be undesirable. So we effectively are doing what we're expected to do, which is to have the appropriate containers and educate the community with respect to direct depositors. When you get to local haulers, people who process trash commercially, and that's what we're talking about, commercial operations. If, to answer your question, if someone in a Tesla opened up a business and charged their client, uh, for, you know, they had two, two customers and they brought that trash. I mean, that is in fact a business and should fall under this.
So wouldn't you then require, you know, some, I don't know, insurance le- level, liability level, workers, I mean, anytime you get into a commercial arena, you get into insurance issues, you get into liability issues, you get into qualification issues. I don't know how you skirt that by just naming it.
I mean, today, basically we ignore all of that. I mean, for example, historically, some of the local haulers have actually operated transfer station machinery when they're serving as local hauler. They've gone into, if this, if their tenant is busy and operate the compact. They get a liability there if, if somebody. Yeah, we shouldn't want that. There's a whole host of issues that come into play with local private haul, commercial use of the transfer station. The D E P, when, when I got involved with the Transfer Station Task Force, first thing they said was, you folks are absolutely crazy to allow commercial use of your, your transfer station. That's what they said. Okay. And that's what began us looking at the thing. Why, why are we doing it? And then we found out that we're about the only folks doing it and, and, and began to felt lonely. Dover, which used to do it, stopped doing it, cold turkey about ten years ago and had a lot of benefits from that. And what we're trying to do here really is to accommodate the existing businesses and the existing hundred and fifty residents were happy with their service. Um, so that's, this is, this is a, an interim step. I do believe someday down the road, uh, that you may find that you don't want to allow this, the commercial, I mean, basically, we're not saying folks can't use those services. We're saying they can't, at some point, we might want to say they can't dispose of the transportation. They then have to pay for disposal commercially, which is probably thirty percent of their costs. You know, it's probably, it's probably a hundred and fifty dollars per ton, uh, per, per client, uh, per year in, in disposal costs. And they're charging five, six hundred dollars a year. So it's probably about thirty percent of their cost. So they have to increase their cost by three dollars. Perhaps there'd be some offsetting benefits. They can take trash from anywhere they want. They can take it from other towns. So they can have large, longer routes. They don't have to hand unload. They could get a dump truck and dump it right in the commercial. They might actually have some cost savings there. Of course, they'd save the sticker fee, but bottom line is probably going to cost them a couple bucks a week in additional customer cost.
Travis, did you want to, because I think, again, we, anyway, let's see other questions or comments on that.
Well, what I threw my, my question before. So I, I, I agree that there, there needs with, I think what.
We could have a select board appeal thing, sure.
Kind of an appeal and just adding it just to the end of that of, you know, it's either the appeal goes to the town administrator or the appeal.
I'm, I'm fine with appeal. My, I'm stuck on, if you're going to have a reg that says the word local hauler, and especially where you've capitalized it, you need to define what is a local hauler. And that leads to, it's going to inevitably, I write these for a living, okay? It's inevitably going to lead to, when you get to definitions, criteria. I think you're going to end up at licensure. I don't see how you can anoint somebody a local hauler and not anoint somebody else. You have to define what that is.
So you've got a continuum here. Currently and for the last forty years, we have not been enforcing the town regulations and state law as it relates to local private hauls. We haven't. Because there are specific rules in the, in C M R nineteen relating to folks who commercially dispose of trash. We are not enforcing those. We have an exposure there as a town. If the D E P, and if somebody called the D P tomorrow and said, come in, these guys aren't doing it. Guy comes in and sees what we're doing. He's not going to be happy. And we're going to be non-compliant. So I see that as a red, you know, red flag. We have to get on top of that and close that hole. If this works, if, 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 I mean, hoping this works and they start recycling and we, the vehicle size is always some good signs there. If this works, if, 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 I mean, hoping this works and they start recycling and we, the vehicle size is already some good signs there. One of the, one of the three contractors already switched from a dump truck to a pickup truck. So that's moving in the right direction. But assuming this works, then I do, I think you're right. I think we'd want to then add to this later additional provisions. But I think we need to get this in place.
Okay. So before, okay. So the compromise that I would suggest is you need to put in the definition of local hauler. Now, you can say a local hauler, and I'm just going to make it up here. A local hauler is anyone who hauls a Carlisle residence trash or recyclables to the transfer station for money. Right? I mean, you could define it in a simple way, but you have to define it. And then you can go on and say, if you get, so as opposed to, what do you call them, direct depositors or something like that? If you take money to hide, to cart a third party's trash to our transfer station, these are the things you have to do.
If you look at the first sentence, Dave, what is lacking there in terms of that, the first sentence of the?
I think you have to go right up front and say, I can draft for you and send it to you. I mean, I can do that. But I would say a local haul, okay. Any, I would say in item one, any party, again, I'm making it up as I go, but any party who transports refuse, or I don't know what the word is, of a Carlisle resident to Carlisle's transfer station for money is defined as a private hauler.
Look at the paragraph above that, the very first paragraph of the entire document, because except for the mention of money, I think that says what you just said. The end of the last sentence there, it says.
Okay. Yeah, I see. Okay. I, I, I don't want to do it here. I could offer you some wordsmithing. I think, let's clarify that definition and be consistent. And so I can do that for you tomorrow. I mean, that's, but in, in general, I like where it's going. I mean, I think I agree. We got to have some idea, you know, got to get it out there. Got to define the size of the truck and the fifty-fifty. My last comment is, you know, it sounds like James Hall is on board with this, but you know, we are putting the DPW workers in a policing function, right? I mean, they're okay with being that way?
I mean, they already have that. I mean, they already.
Have it, but they don't do it, right? I mean.
They do some.
Yeah.
They challenge it with somebody on a Saturday.
I'm sorry. That's my second last question.
Danny Lee, the sticker, or I'm sorry, the.
I saw them checking last, actually Saturday, they saw them checking. I was like, yeah. Okay. One last question. C and D, you said they can't take C and D. So what are, what are the people who maybe, let's say they're elderly, they use the third party and they have C and D? What are their?
This is in the Carlisle Regulation. The Carlisle Regulation, which has been in place since nineteen ninety, says that that has to be disposed of commercially. When I, when I do a process, I typically.
Okay. So meaning not in our station, somewhere else.
You rent a dumpster. Most people do anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
David, wouldn't it just solid and we could have Tom go on with what he wants? If the last sentence just said, who provides recycling waste disposal services for a fee to Carlisle residents?
Sure.
Then we can be done.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then, yeah, but there's a couple of legal things I would, it'll take me five minutes. I'll, I'll do it. I, yes, I'll do it. Cause I think later on you don't capitalize. Once you define a term, you need to define.
Well, the other thing is it should say local private haulers throughout.
Right.
Capitalize.
Change it to local haulers.
Sure. Okay.
If you send it to me in Word, in five minutes, I'll flip it around.
Okay.
Do we need to see? I was going to say, um, I, we probably then need to wait. Sorry, Tom.
Okay. When is the next time we can finalize?
June thirteenth.
Okay. The thing I'm concerned about is the recycling dividend points thing. We actually are okay right now because they, they don't, they're going to start looking at that in June. So once this is in effect, I can post this in a website link to it. And it's, you know, it's a thousand dollars, not a huge, it's a huge amount of money, but it's a thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a recycling given in points.
How substantial are these changes you want to make, David?
Minor, but I think, let's get it right. I, you want me to do it tonight? I'll do it right now. Just. I mean, we got to write good law. I'm just saying.
The other changes that if you want to scroll down to the bottom, Ryan, with the other red changes, were basically consistency and clarity. And of course, now we want to change that to private local hauler capitalized.
Yeah. And number nine would say privately.
I think Norm's concern there was that in the event some of these were quoted.
You know what? I'm going to, while we, I'll tell you what, let's go on to the next topic. I'll put this in a Word document.
Okay.
I'll send it, we'll be.
Yeah. So I think what Tom was, that, that, those are things that I asked to be in there. Cause if you looked at, you know, it, it said local hauler throughout a lot of them, but some of it, it didn't. And so I just wanted it to be clear. Every one of these items is for local haulers.
Yeah. And so we'll just be consistent.
Right now.
Category. Take a deep breath, everyone, because we haven't even gotten to the really substantive issues on the agenda tonight. But thank you, Tom. We'll, we'll come back to this. I think we'll be able to approve it. And then you'll be able to move ahead.
Okay.
And thank you and the committee for your work on this. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. So Julie, I'm glad to see you're here. Welcome. Come on up to the table. And we are going to have, this is a discussion, not probably, we won't finalize anything, but I could be wrong. But so we, Julie has done a lot of work to sort of give us some informative documents and to help guide our conversation.
Really, really great. Thank you for putting it together.
Yeah. And Ryan, I don't know if you wanted to give any introductory remarks on this, because I know you and Julie have talked a lot about it. But did you want to?
I do. So at the risk of taking liberties, I think everyone's goal here is to come up with a plan and do something, right? To finalize this project in a way that, that makes sense for the community and move forward from the planning stage. So in discussions, and there are ninety-five percent Julie and five percent me, we are understanding that the next, the next document, the next piece you get from this feasibility study is really important because that's probably going to be either rejected as something you didn't want or what you're going to do. So we'd like to make the first, or the, the second part, what you do. We want to make it so that the information that you're getting allows you to make a decision and, and do it, right? So what we realize in our conversation is what's missing for the studies to be really impactful, for you to get the information you want, is to set, set clear goals. So not necessarily what the, what the scope is going to say word for word, but what it is that the consultant is going to answer. What question do you want them to answer? What do you want the building to look like? What's the goal of the building? And then, then you would go for how much is it going to cost and, and all of the other ideas. So Julie's also grounded a lot of this in the history, because this discussion has not remained to the last year. Many of you have been involved in it for a decade and then the five decades prior, they've also talked about this land specifically and how to handle this municipal building problem. So grounding it in the past, defining the goals as they exist now, sending that to the consultant will allow you to get the answers that you need in order to hopefully make a decision or at least inform the next step of this process. That's what we engaged in and Julie presented to you tonight, and she can take it from there to go into the details.
Thank you. So I think Ryan basically like laid it out really nicely. What I did is I went through the history of, you know, the, actually fairly recent.
Julie, just can you pull that mic closer to you so everybody can?
I feel like I'm loud, but I guess.
Oh, no, no.
Not for everybody. Okay.
Of course, not for the TVs, for the folks listening. Yeah.
I still have the owl, I don't think, do you? So what I did is I went through the history, the relatively recent history of the studies and the work that's been put in to kind of figure out what, what should happen with these two facilities. I think that, you know, from my analysis, you, there's a lot of pieces, there's a lot of components, there's been a lot of work done. Maybe not everything is a hundred percent perfect or was a hundred percent what you wanted at the time, but I think there's enough to draw from. So if you can figure out what the goal is, you know, we can put some of the pieces together and we can narrow the scope for our R F P. Figure out what else do we need to know? What needs to be updated? What information are we missing? So I don't know if you want me to go through the document I put together or?
Yeah, I think if you could do that, you know, fairly, you know, succinctly, and then we'll have time for us to kick things around. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. So I'll try to be succinct. So the first part of this page is really just kind of what Ryan outlined. So starting with the police station, the key questions and potential approaches. So what is the twenty-year goal for the department and what would the renovation or addition achieve toward that goal? And so I outlined a few different options. And they're not, I realized there's a couple little errors in them from some, from some feedback I received. But essentially, you know, the first one is to solve the accessibility system and maintenance needs within the existing building footprint. And if you want to do that, T B A has identified what some of the problems are. And they've even put together construction documents that would address some of those problems. And so you know, you might be able to use some of that and get an updated estimate. And then I would say like part, in that instance, if you didn't expand the footprint, parking situation would be as it is today. And solutions would be explored kind of as a separate conversation. The second piece would be, or the second, second goal would be accreditation. So, and if you want to solve that, T B A has also identified the problem and some solutions. And it would, it would result in additional interior space and that would impact the parking. So there are some documents you could use, you could get updated. And then we would want to look at parking solutions kind of in tandem with any renovation that expanded the building. And then the third one would be if there's like an entirely expanded concept or if the new chief had a different idea or a different direction, he wants to go in for the department. So.
Julie, if I could just add, so one of the things that the, has been discussed here many times is what if we expanded the envelope, right? And that, that would impact the parking in the surrounding area. So what Julie and I are saying to you and many others too, it's not just her and I, is expand it to do what? So if the goal was, we want an accredited police department, if we can do it. Now to the consultant, take the T B A report and expand the building envelope. Can we get to accreditation? That is a very clear goal and you'll get a very specific answer. If your goal is not to get accreditation, then you wouldn't necessarily need to expand the envelope unless there was some other goal for expanding it. So you shouldn't expand it for expanding sake. You should have a point to doing that.
And then again, like what is the budget, budget objective? So I just gave you kind of the parameters that we've seen so far. So in twenty seventeen, T B A estimated for all their work that they had outlined in their document, two point three eight million. And then the Johnson Roberts Associates estimate came in last year at seven point three four million. But they had different charges, right? So T B A was kind of looking at fixing some of the existing conditions and solving some, some key critical problems. And J R A was given sort of like a best practices for a town of our size and the department of our size. So with cost being no object. So just the history, I'll kind of breeze through, but basically, you know, I, starting in twenty seventeen, that's when the T B A study was done and they looked at all of the town facilities, not just the police department. They outlined a number of the deficiencies with the mechanical systems, accessibility. And then they noted some things that would be needed for accreditation and some things that would be needed for operations. They also provided conceptual plans as part of that study where they identified potential expansion areas for the building. I don't think there's much magic there. I don't think that another study is going to tell you anything that's very different. I could be wrong about that, but the site's pretty constrained as it is today.
I interrupt you for a second. So they recommended from sixty-six hundred to ninety-six hundred, right? Three thousand more square feet? And did they recommend expanding the envelope? How did they get those three thousand square feet?
There are, so they, there are some areas that they pushed the building out in the front and on the, the west end. So sorry, Ryan, if you keep scrolling, I'm, I'm trying to go as quickly as I can since. So yeah, then in twenty eighteen, an R F Q went out for reconfiguration of the police station, which included some of the scope that T B A had outlined. Notably, the ground level booking area in Sallyport and then the first were secure perimeter and public access. In twenty nineteen, they put together a hundred percent construction docs. And then they put out an invitation for bids and they got an estimate back in twenty twenty at one point seven five million for the job. My understanding is that was about a million more than they had projected, that T B A had estimated themselves. And then that brings us to winter twenty twenty-one. Is that correct? That feels like a long time ago.
Yeah.
Okay. But so the Public Safety Facilities Task Force was established and I kind of outlined what their charge was here. And then they kind of dug into the history themselves and all of these studies. And they commissioned a study by Johnson Roberts Associates. And again, the study scope for them was to determine the needs of each department in order to conform to current best practice without regard to cost. So J R A put together their preliminary program for the police station where they expand the footprint. So it was J R A that, that recommended expanding the footprint by three thousand square feet. And then they put together some cost projection, probable cost, probable project cost estimates. And those came in at a renovation addition at seven point three four million and then a new police, police station on a new site, nine point four seven million. But that's not including acquisition of the new site. So from the T B A study to the J R A study and estimate, you get kind of a range of costs. But they had, again, different scopes. So the Public Safety Facilities Task Force, they came out with some reports to you in December and February. And they had some key findings. The key findings, I think, that really are helpful to this is that they narrowed it down to, this is going to be a renovation project using the existing site. There's not going to be a new site. There's not going to be a combined building. So, and then they noted that there's some key benefits to doing that. So no cost of property acquisition, less costly than constructing a new building, continued operations during construction. And it doesn't necessarily require new infrastructure, at least holistically.
Why don't we pause there?
Sure.
This is the police department part. Yeah. And go back and, and see if people have questions. I certainly have a few, but.
I'll just add, just to conclude this section. So if you, if you leave this to the department head, and I've talked to department heads about this, so this isn't like me talking out of school, then they're going to tell you everything they need to make the police department as, as policiy as possible, right? If you leave it to the consultants, they're going to do whatever it is the consultants believe that the town should, should have, which has some benefits, both of those, right? You want to know what your department head wants and you want to know what other people are doing to inform the decision. The piece that's really missing here is what do you want? What does the town want from its police department? Where does the town going to go with police in twenty years? That will help shape the rest of the, the consultant work.
I just wanted to add one thing about the size of the building. Once you get past seventy-five hundred square feet, you need to sprinkler it. And one of the big goals was not to get it beyond, because then you're just spending money for nothing. I mean, it's not for nothing, but you certainly don't get any usefulness out of that money. And it's very, sprinkling is very expensive, especially retro.
So, well, I, I have some specific questions and then sort of a broad question. But so if I'm looking on page two about the T B A study and the things they recommended, I believe we've done some of this since, right? So the exterior wheelchair, that's, that's done, correct?
It's in progress.
In progress. Yeah. And the boiler? Was that replaced? I don't know. We need somebody from facilities, I guess. And the fire alarm?
That was done.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, so some of this has been done.
And some of the HVAC has been done. We put, yeah.
Yeah. So.
We put about three, six hundred thousand, as I recall, into HVAC.
Yeah. So all right. So that's helpful and we, we should just know the things that are been, have been done. The the two sort of larger questions are.
Excuse me. The, the emergency generator has been replaced also.
Okay. So one is, you know, we, I know we've, we've tossed around some numbers about the, the current debt we carry and then projecting what we think are, the, the debt is that we might, that we feel we can afford to take on for some kind of significant municipal facilities work in the next, you know, period of time, next ten to fifteen years. And I don't, I don't know if, that we've ever settled on something, but it seems to me when we, when the question is about, when we come back to cost, do we have that? I don't think we have that yet, that understanding of.
Affordability.
Yeah. Because I mean, we've talked about getting that and figuring out it, but to me, you know, let's say we were thinking we, we could, we could manage. I mean, you, obviously there has to be some criteria about what we think is affordable. But if we thought we could manage with the decrease of our current debt to take on new debt and it could be somewhere in the fifteen million range. And we could do that, yeah, in such a way that our, we weren't going to have a huge increase in taxes. That would, that would help guide, you know, what, what we might conclude in terms of cost. So, so that's just one big question for me. The other is, it really, I really was struck by the, the descriptions of what we need for accreditation and deciding whether that's something we want. And you know, I look at our town and I look at the level of crime or the level of, of police work that involves any kind of significant, you know, crime or, you know, criminal behavior. And it's tiny, it's tiny. And and while, yes, we have the potential to grow in terms of our population, that is, it's not an unlimited potential. And right, we've got limited land. And so I, I, I think I'd like to really address that question of do we think we want to have an accredited police department? Because I think some of the things listed here, we don't, we might use once a year.
I don't think we could possibly do it on that.
I'm sorry, say that last bit.
Not sure how we could possibly.
Meet accreditation, yeah.
Yeah, and that was a question, I think we covered it once before, but I, one question that struck me is a jail cell, is it, if we were to contract with a neighboring town, we use it so infrequently, does that jeopardize our accreditation? Do you have to have a jail cell? Or can you have a relationship with somebody that has a jail cell?
Because they were a town of over 5,000, yes. The first question you asked, I would need to, to dig a little bit to.
Yeah, we should have two jail cells, right?
Oh, but.
Yeah.
It's adding some.
So the jail cells we have are inadequate. So regardless of what you do, you need to address.
You're bidding, building on your comment that infrequently used things.
Yes.
Do we have to have them or, maybe let me broaden it, not say jail cells. Infrequently used things, I mean, there must be, you're saying, I think that you're a town of over 5,000. There are things you have to have to be accredited. You cannot outsource those things.
And there are some things you have to have, period.
Yeah.
Right, like lockup.
And, and I want to add that the TBA plans that we have did accommodate these jail cells and the booking area and the public meeting room. And, and sorry?
Sallyport.
And the Sallyport. What, yeah, so it, it, the plans that we have in hand addressed most of this stuff.
From TBA.
From TBA.
Yes.
And then I also looked at the, the program needs for operations. And again, right, this is, I'm not a public safety expert. But it seemed to me that some of this, the kind of a right-sized training room, you know, isn't that something that could be shared if we're going to do something at the fire department? Couldn't that be a shared space or, pardon? Right here? Yep, yep. And then the, again, I don't know if you have to have this, an interview room with recording and observation abilities for detectives. I mean, that sounds like much larger urban police station. But again, I don't, so I don't know.
The problem with public safety is you don't need it until you need it. So a lot of the times you're building and, and having something because when you need it, you really need it. So when, when that room is necessary, it's necessary. It's just, I can't tell you when, if ever, it will be. It's a lot like insurance.
And I will also again add, the TBA plans did have that interview room. In fact, it had, as I recall, two interview rooms. Mm-hmm, so it, it has most of the stuff in there already.
So like just some, some additional detail for the cells, the way the cells are configured, the employees are not safe. So if you have a particular type of prisoner and you have to lock up in the area right now, the way it's configured now, people, people could get hurt. So the, the liability that we carry and, you know, there are employees, it matters. So the, it's not just for if, it's when it does happen, it's a real problem. This is addressed in the TBA study.
Yeah. Not only that, but the people could get away very easily. Whereas in the TBA study, we made it so that you, you couldn't just get out of the cell and leave.
Yeah.
As you can right now. You'd have to, there'd be lots of, lots of locked doors between you and the outside. Yes. There's no single point failure.
Those things. But I've, so others should.
I think, so the, but the question that's being asked of us, I think, is do we want full accreditation? Or do we want to stop short of that and see if there's something else that will get us most of the way there? I don't know, I don't know what those levers are. Or do we want to just kind of say to the new police chief, tell us what you want? Those are our three options, right?
More or less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that we're outlined today.
What are the, what are the downsides of not being accredited? What does it mean?
Being accredited means that you've met a third-party evaluation of what your department should be in terms of policy and professional police practice. So if I was a select board member, knowing that my department was accredited would mean I know my police department is as sound as it can be based off a third-party evaluation. Anything short of accreditation, you are self-assessing, which leaves you vulnerable to some, to not knowing some aspects.
But what's the practical impact? Because we could work around.
We've not been accredited for how long?
What is that?
Yeah, right.
We've never been accredited, right?
You said liability earlier, you know, you have prisoners that could escape or something, and people get hurt. So that's, if you're.
You can correct those things, right, without being accredited?
You can, if you are robust in your analysis of your self-departments, but it's the same thing as your finances. You, you can have sound.
Well, but if you're not, in a finance thing, if you get a bad audit report, it eventually hurts your bond rating, it hurts a lot of things. So that's what Travis is asking, and I'm asking, what is the impact? If we, if we're robust enough, if we didn't need to ever borrow a dime, we could say, you know, we don't care about audit assessments, we'll just self-audit. But we do need to borrow, so we have a reason to, you know, have that kind of third party. What's the reason to have the like safety third party?
Well, I would say that you audit for more than, than bonding, you audit to know that your money is being controlled and spent correctly. Policing is the same. So the national conversation around policing is how can we increase police and training standards so that we know every police officer we put on the street is properly applying the policies the way we want it? For instance, you probably don't know what your use of force policy is right now. You could bring it in and have, and look at every police policy, but you've had a pretty good discussion tonight about how you don't have time to do community conversation, never mind go through all the policies. So what accreditation gives you is you would know that the use of force policy that you have approved is the one that you have.
If you went to a third party and they ran the analysis and said your use of force policies are adequate, but your facility is inadequate. I mean, they do a, you know, 100-point test and they find 96 points are fine and facility-related points are not fine and they identify those, have we still accomplished that mission?
If that's your standard and goal, yes.
Well, because you, you don't get the golden, you don't get the good housekeeping seal of approval, and I'm not sure what that means. You do accomplish what you said, which is a third party that knows more than we do, analyzes all these things and says, you're good at this and you're not good at this, that we fix the things we're not good at. And we come to the four things that say, well, your jail cell is not big enough and this and that. And we say, you know, okay, we got it.
Which is why we asked this. What is your 20-goal, 20-year goal for the department? If you want to have the best police department and the best fire department, and then you need to think about that with your renovation. If you, if you are willing to take 96%, then that will tell you what you need to build. If you want to be ADA compliant and good at recruiting and good at retention, that's another level of standard. But if you don't decide it yourself, then someone else will decide it for you.
Right. Travis, do you have any comments?
No, I'm just thinking, actually, I'm surprised David didn't bring this up about the process, because it's process-oriented, those. And how we, how we get there. I, I thought it was interesting earlier, we were discussing about how we get more community engagement. I think it was really helpful that we had the task force, you know, help us understand that, gosh, the, you know, having a new station is probably not feasible for us. And, and, you know, ultimately the select board and ultimately the town voters will decide that. But, you know, that was helpful information and I think it was thoroughly vetted. I think, you know, yes, we should set these goals, but we need more, some more information and a process here for getting community input because we're just five of us sitting around saying, well, it's what we think. And I don't think we've done enough yet. But I, I don't know, given what I know so far, I mean, we've got a plan in place that had been vetted at the time and was deemed a buildable plan for the police station. It seems like that's something we should strongly evaluate at this point, whether we want to do that. But I like your thing, it's taking us even further up the chain and say, what do we really want? But I think we could spend a lot of time, you know, trying to figure that out and still not solve this problem in the more immediate.
Right, because we want to be, get to where we.
I think we need to move the ball forward somehow, too.
Yeah.
So do I. And I think, you know, we, we put together a task force and they evaluated it. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that their, their recommendation was we really can't build a different building, there isn't a feasible location for it. We should build onsite, on the current sites that we have. And were they not recommending that we kind of base it on accreditation in the TBA study? But we would have to look closely at how it could be expanded.
I don't believe they said we should shoot for accreditation. I think.
I thought they said with the TBA study, which is kind of the same thing, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, I, I want to be real careful. When you say TBA study, you're talking about the 2017 thing where they kind of surveyed all the thing or the plans?
Plans.
Okay, so let's say.
The construction documents.
I just want to.
Right, I'm sorry, Tom, we. Right, that's what I, I, that's what I thought. And so, you know.
Otherwise, the select board is basically saying they're in charge of that. It would be different if I was, I knew that, that seems like a.
Right. So I, I support that. I mean, I support, you know, we, we put together a committee. And they came back and they said, yeah, we should be accredited, it should be on that spot and we should do a survey. Not a survey, we should update the, the plans to make sure that, just to, just to make sure that it's still feasible because some things have changed. I don't, I don't, it seems like we might be throwing all their work out and kind of going back from the beginning again. Just from what I've been hearing.
I don't, no, I don't, do not want to throw.
Yeah.
No, I don't either. I'm.
Anybody's work because it's, we'll never get anybody to, you can't, don't ask anybody to do anything ever again.
Well, and I think it's, you know, we've, well, at least it's become clear to me that the TBA work, the, the doc, the plan they came up with is, is still very viable and just needs to be updated.
The only thing wrong with the plan was the estimate was out of whack.
Right.
And then when we got sticker shock, when we got the correcta.
Right.
And when we got the bids. Otherwise, I think it was a really solid plan.
Yeah, there's some.
And if it didn't get us all the way to accreditation, it got us, you know, within a whisker, within the site and, you know, without sprinklering.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm sorry to be pushing it like this, but I'm just thinking like every minute that goes by in this meeting, those construction costs are going up.
Really? Indeed.
So you have committed to an ARPA request for the police station. It could look like.
The scope.
Yes, for, for a scope.
Yeah.
We would like to see what, how close we get to accreditation using existing plans and updating those plans. And that answer coming back to you would be acceptable to this board.
I think it's more than acceptable. I think it's vital information for us to, to take the next step, any step, because.
But, but the accredited, have, or maybe pose it a question, have the accredited, I don't know how to say it, accreditation criteria changed since the study?
Most likely.
So that would have to be.
Have to make sure that we're current, not, you can't just, I mean, laboring, we go back and forth on this, but we can't just take that plan.
That's, I think that they, they recommend that we make sure that it still gets us.
You just hired a police chief too, that brought Brooklyn to accreditation. So you have.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, yeah. I, I think we need to know where that plan leaves us, that current plan that we have in hand leaves us vis a vis accreditation. What are the gaps? Did it leave any gaps? And if so, what are they? And then I think we can.
And a cost for doing what was currently, what was in the first plan, right?
And a cost for what was in the first plan?
Well, the TBA.
I know, but do you, do you have it all re-estimated?
Yeah, right, you have to base on, get new cost for that.
Okay.
Right? And, and whatever changes there have been in terms of accreditation requirements and other code changes or whatever. Right, does that, right? Are we in agreement on that?
Yep.
Get it all updated?
The question I had, though, I agree, and, and back to Ryan's initial three questions, what will the renovation addition achieve? And the question is, again, accreditation, we want to encompass that in the thing. Maybe I've not heard that. We said, oh, we're going to relook at this, we're going to see if we can get a, like, how close we come. But then shouldn't we also know if we were to, to, the steps necessary to get full accreditation? Is that what you're saying? You're saying that, okay.
Saying, then we also need to know what the gap is and then you can decide whether you fill the gap or not.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand.
Yeah, no, no.
So those are the two, two components. Needs to be full accreditation. Well, I think that's what we will. But that's what I think we should decide once we have the information. If we find that full accreditation costs $30 million because we have to build a whole new thing, maybe we'll make a different decision. But I think having that information will be important.
All right, David, is, you good with where we've landed on the police station?
Yeah.
Okay.
How far?
You want to vote on that?
Yeah.
No, I think we'd like to see a, I would like to see a sow. I'd like to vote on the sow.
The actual.
Bring the sow back now.
Yeah, right. This is guidance to write this out.
Yes, okay. And Julie, do you want to recap what you think, what you've taken from this for this sow?
Yeah, so, well, the sow is going to be a lot more detailed than what I'm about to say. But basically, the goal is accreditation and we need to use the existing TBA construction documents and see, update them for code requirements and see whether they meet current accreditation and compliance standards. And then if there are any gaps, what are the gaps and what do we need to do to fix them and how much is the whole thing going to cost?
I mean, if the gap is like a meeting room, we can possibly use this move, for instance. But if the gap is something else, you know, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to see.
Well, that brings up a point which you raised earlier, somebody did. I was writing this transfer station thing, so I didn't catch it, but which I finished and said, but if the workaround, if their conclusion is, like you said, a meeting room, you need three, two meeting rooms, you only have one. The question is, can you use a meeting room outside the police station and still?
Either that or we say, we forego accreditation because if that's not the way they're going to be about it, we don't.
Of course you can say that, but I mean, the goal is to first see how we can leverage.
I think the underlying, lining thing needs to be that everybody doesn't get their own of everything. And so if we already have it in town and that would still meet the needs, we're not going to build it again. We already have it.
Absolutely.
Okay, look at that. Yeah, all right, great.
Move on to.
clarity, right?
Let's move on to fire.
Want us to sign that piece?
Yeah. Blood, yeah.
I was going to say, pick our fingers and we'll all put a fingerprint on it, yeah.
Okay, fire station.
So the similar critical decisions and approaches, what is the 20-year goal? And what will the renovation annex achieve toward that goal? So the goals that I've outlined are to better accommodate an all-volunteer department. And that if you want to do that, we have a kind of scope and design from Chief Sorrows. And we could get an estimate for that. And as part of that process, you could look and see if potentially a shared training room, the fire department, like some, there could be some shared spaces between fire and police. Um, and as part of that process, you could look and see if potentially a shared training room, the fire department, like some, there could be some shared spaces between fire and police. And one thing that we would need to do is explore how an, or, an annex sort of at the back of the fire department building would impact operations and parking and things onsite like that, and then look and, and see if we need other solutions. And then the other potential goal would be, um, considering the needs of a hybrid or full-time, um, department in the future. Um, and for that, you could probably use the JRA program and estimate as a starting point and kind of work back from there. And then again, what is the budget objective? What project cost could you support? And so I outlined from the 2017 TBA estimate for the fire department, um, it came in at 1.69 million. Um, and then the 2022 JRA estimate was 27.76 million. And again, that sec, the JRA estimate was based on program best practices, cost was no object.
Yeah. And as I recall, the TBA estimate was things like roof and, and didn't really change any of the, um, operations or the, or accreditation issues for the department.
So, yeah, so that's a great segue, because if you scroll down, Ryan.
We were adding a trailer that would allow for the.
That wasn't, was that in the, yeah, okay. Was that part of that one, you're right, sorry, you're right.
Allowed for the separate showers and everything.
Yeah, okay.
To add some quick, uh, quick color from our chief, and if I'm wrong, we have a good enough relationship where he'll tell me and I'll correct it to everybody.
Already corrected me.
So the, the chief, and I am in lockstep with the chief, believe that, that we should be a call fire department for, for as long as possible. So that should be a goal.
Absolutely.
But a lot of the stuff that Chief Soros says we need to remain competitive as a call fire department also would allow us to prepare for potential full-time or hybrid options. But I think that's important to hear. Uh, Chief Soros is definitely the biggest advocate from, for call firefighting. I believe 100% given Carlisle's budget and structure, that call firefighting is the best if we can hang on. But that there could be a goal to also try and make sure that we're flexible enough with this building, uh, in case we need to pivot. A goal one with the sub-goal underneath it.
I support that.
Just do I.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
History.
We can come back and, is everybody, uh, on board with that, or you want, shall we continue on with the?
Yeah. I think everybody's, well, my.
You on board with that, Nathan?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Everybody's being flexible as far as what, looking.
That we, we know that our goal is maintaining our on, our existing on-call fire department as long as we can. But whatever changes we make include setting us up to be able to pivot to a, um, a paid fire department if we have to.
Are the physical requirements of the building for a paid fire department different in a substantive way?
So the things that we need to do to update our fire station in order to accommodate the future needs of a call department also match what you would need for a hybrid.
They align.
We, we say that now, but I will say, we looked at, like, with the fire station, uh, about reusing and remember building a second story. And then we said, oh, we go, designed it so we could do that. And then we find out the codes have changed. And so, you know, some of this. What? But no, and, and same may be true for accreditation of the fire department if you go full-time. I mean, we may want to really, I hate to say it, but think about the call fire department and not so much about that. So I guess maybe, I'm, I, I do want to look at it and think about it, but I, I just think things are changing so rapidly in codes and the compliance and all that, that we could build something that's functionally obsolete in 10 years. And then, you know, we go to, if we were to go to a, you know, full-time department, it would, we would have had to do it all over. I don't know, that's my point.
Things change is your point.
That's what I could have said at that.
Be more succinct.
Thank you, Nathan.
But yeah, so, so yeah, please, um, continue on.
Sure, so, um, the 2017 TBA study identified a number of, um, program and accessibility deficiencies, again with the fire department. Um, Chief Soros emailed me and noted that a number of these things have been done, just like we did with the police department. So like if we were to use the TBA study and, um, as a launchpad, we would need to tend, to, to update it for things that have already been done, right? See, in the TBA study, they had a concept plan that had a space, identified like a space to the rear of the building, right? Um, because, and there was a separate structural analysis that identified that the building can't have a second building, right? Um, but they identified a space at the rear that Chief Soros, I think, thinks is the viable location for an annex or a secondary building. Again, I, I don't have any, like, from my planning background, I don't have any other, like, magical idea for where you would put something on the site. I think that's probably pretty correct. And then they also identified a space at like the southeast corner, um, for, for expansion or modification as well. The estimate of that in 2017 from TBA was 1.69 million. 2021 Public Safety Facilities Task Force started digging into all of this again. They commissioned JRA to put together a program and an estimate, again, cost no object, just looking at best practices for, um, fire department, um, for a town of our size. They had a basically 20,000 square foot expansion, um, in their program. And they're jumping down a little bit. Their estimates came in in the 27, 26 million dollar range. So there is a big, big jump in costs between TBA and JRA. And then Chief Soros kind of came in with a little bit of a reduced program from JRA and then a design for the annex that's two stories, that would house a program based on critical needs and it would better accommodate the on-call volunteer department. Considering the potential for a future hybrid or full-time department and, um, attempting to solve space needs without requiring a new location or the need for temporary space during construction. The Public Safety Facilities Task Force reported back to you. They had some key findings again for the fire department, similar to the police department, use the existing site. Use remodel annex or add on to the existing building. And then they outlined a number of different benefits. A bill, as noted earlier in this conversation, a building greater than 7,500 square feet will trigger a sprinkler requirement. So that comment in here, um, I'm not sure exactly where it comes from, but it's potentially not correct depending on the size of the building. Yeah, so that's, that's where we are.
So it's, it's a little clearer on the police station that the prior study was pretty much in line with what we need and so we should build on it. You had this, now you have this kind of off-the-reservation study. You have a napkin study basically by Brian. And then a very minor study that's the precedent. So it's less clear to me where you put the baseline for whoever would bid on it. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, so I think that, you know, part of the issue is, right, TBA never created construction documents for the fire department, right? So they never really built out the program that they had, that they were thinking of.
You know, it's pretty, two million dollars is not a lot of money.
Right. Um, I think you could take Brian's concept and maybe have a company kind of develop it. You know, I haven't, it's been some, I haven't actually seen it. But I'm going to get it, hopefully tomorrow. But you, you could take a look at it, have a company look at it, kind of design it, um, and then see how everything fits.
Sort of answering my question, like, essentially, maybe discard is a little harsh, but take elements of the, the latest, the JRA study. Not really dwell on the TBA study, use like the Brian concept as the guidance, right, is that kind of.
I think he uses elements of both in his, yeah.
I think Tom actually came here and presented and said, you know, that the fire station, that, as presented by Chief Soros, you'd met with him and it was a good plan.
Tom, why don't you, Tom, why don't you come up to the, um, microphone so people, hold on a second, Tom.
Tom Ballot, Nathan Lane. Oh, in Brian's plan, he basically defined the requirements as he designed, did the design. And he's got approximately 9,000 square foot facility annexed to the current fire station, which accommodates his needs for a non-call fire department. JRA took a approach of cost is no object, what's an ideal structure? And they basically built the new 28,000 square foot building or pour down the existing one and build a new 28,000 square foot building. So, uh, JRA took the requirements in a general sense, Brian is saying, here's what I really need. Things that, for example, you've got the antique fire trucks. Brian believes there's a good reason to have the antique fire trucks there for the on-call fire department and recruitment. But you don't need a 20-foot wide bay for the antique fire trucks. And, and you're paying very, you know, a thousand dollars per square foot. You don't, you don't want to be putting, so he's got a practical design which meets his needs. And so, and the building inspector said, you can build this right next to the other, you know, you can be quarter inch away, you can have a, uh, open doors and have, walk in between them, you just can't have it, uh, produce any horizontal load on the, on the existing building. Sprinklers, by the way, whether or not they're required, it's an expense, but it's not, you know, that's not what brings you from 10, from 10 million to 28 million dollars.
I think it's a pretty good look for your fire station to be sprinkled, personally.
There's very, well, there's not that much combustible in there, it's all metal, I mean, it might melt, but.
But it's not a huge cost driver in, in a 20.
No, it is as a retrofit, though.
Right, a retrofit.
Yeah, and, or new construction is much less.
Okay.
Yes, I think that Chief Soros is going to give me a tour tomorrow and I think he wants to show me his ideas while he's giving me the tour, so. But I appreciate that and.
Um, John, if you can be really brief, okay, um, come on up and, Tom, thank you for your input.
Tom Valentine, history, 268 history. There was a, and I've been involved in this for four years, as you know, five years, who knows how long. So there's been a strong dialogue back and forth between, um, Stu Roberts and Soros and the committee. So there's a, so it's not, and it started maybe as back of an envelope, but there is a real design plan there and everything else that has been thought out. Yes, it's going to be reconfigured when you do it, but nonetheless, there's, it's, you know, yes, they maybe should have started way up here and now we're down at a practical level and it's doable. I think the one issue that you haven't addressed, which is, as you know, is part of the facilities plan, what are you going to do about worker housing and things like that? And keeping the on-call fire people there. And we have, we haven't dealt with that issue, that's a separate than this, but that's a next step in the facilities things, and I know you don't want to deal with that. And the other point, it's probably all what you're talking about, Barney, it's easily going to come up about 15 million dollars. And, you know, when you add all this up together, there's no question it's going to be that. And you're going to have all the cost pressures that we've got with all the other employees. So keeping the tax rate at the level of growing 3%, 4% is going to be hard. And that's, that's life for the next 10 years at least, and you're going to have to learn to live with it.
Okay, thanks, John.
So, you know, I, I, I guess, you know, I, I, I think that we're, we are going down the right path here. The only thing that I would say is that when we get, when we get this report, I think we need to just really look carefully at what those needs were, like, you know, there's a cost benefit, you know, what was just said was, you know, Brian feels that we need to have the antique trucks there for recruitment. Well, how much do we need that, right? So I think when we see those costs, I don't think we should just assume that we're going to keep those there. I mean, if it, if it's a reasonable cost, then, okay, I'm certainly not suggesting we get rid of them. But it gets back at my, my point earlier of not everything has to be right there. And maybe there's another lower cost solution of how we could deal with that. And also just reevaluating things, not questioning, um, Brian at all, I think he, he does great. We can go way back to, and, and it could be that things have changed, but we could go way back maybe five or six years ago when we bought a new tanker truck and the fire department decided to keep, this was before Brian was there, decided to keep the old fire truck. Um, and so do we really need the two tanker trucks? Maybe we do, but I just think that we just need to have that if we're building something to accommodate things, I think we need to have that. Now, I was part of the decision to keep the second ambulance and I feel strongly that we should keep that second ambulance. But, um, you know, maybe there's other things that can change in order to make it more affordable to us.
Well, and I've heard the argument from Brian about why we need the two tankers and that's because we don't have any fire hydrants and we need to carry our water to our thing. So we need two tankers, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, but there was a decision to replace a truck, not to have a second one. And so I think it's just, we just need to have that discussion if, if, if it's going to impact these construction costs.
Yeah.
What's really important is that this becomes your plan and not Soros' plan.
Right.
Extremely important that whatever is you receive for a study becomes what you can then pare down and change, obviously, but that is, it's yours and you own it. Uh, in terms of selling it to the public.
Right.
We'll get, we will.
But, uh, it's also helpful if your chief is also on board because he will help you better to sell it than if he's not, so.
I'm saying this in jest, but we just need a different, like, than a napkin plan, like, we need it actually.
Yes, yeah.
Exactly. Um, so, um, I think we are, um.
So do, have we articulated what our goal is for this?
Well, our, our. I believe we're saying we want to, um, continue to support it as an all-call, on-call, uh, fire department, uh, as long as we can. And, um, if there is, and if we can include, um, within that, the ability to pivot to, uh, a paid fire department to the degree that we can predict that, that we want to do that.
Okay, and do we have?
I, I, I think I'm siding with Travis, that, that might be layering on a layer that might increase the cost of the study and, and back to points that Nathan's raised in the past. I question whether that needs to be part of the criteria. Is that sort of a unknown unknown, right? And it may take the planner, I mean, I look for your guidance, but that may take that study in a whole direction that's not particularly helpful.
What's your thought on that?
I think we can ask for them to break that out, right? So you, they can, um, tell you what it would, what it would look like if it was, if the fire department remained all-call, right? And then if there's additional things that need to happen to add that flexibility and that costs more, they can put that in separately, so then you can decide.
I like the gap, the gap report that we're asking for, the.
For the police department accreditation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put it in that.
Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
Yeah. That will help guide us. But, but the, the major goal is to keep it as a call, on-call.
Okay.
Using, using the Soros plan, right?
With annex idea, I prefer to it as the annex idea.
The select board's annex design.
That's right, the select board, annex design.
We stole from Brian.
Right, okay, uh, great. And, uh, yeah, I'm just going to say we, if we could do this next part in, uh, four to five minutes, it would be great. Maybe this would be the most controversial. Yeah, I know. So, um, just briefly, Julie, give us your overview on the approach to parking needs.
Sure, so, um, having worked in three other municipalities and seen parking studies done in at least two of the three. And multiple times over, um, I know that, um, there's kind of a formula that consulting firms use when they're looking to assess utilization and to make recommendations, um, in terms of parking management. So some of those recommendations, um, may be applicable more to a bustling town that has like a busy central business district and a lot of employees coming in from outside. And so not all recommendations are going to apply to Carlisle, but I think a lot of the, the kind of general tenants of parking management, um, in some ways could apply. So what I did here is I kind of outlined, like, just off the top of my head, kind of what I've seen over the years in terms of a parking needs analysis. And, and the way that I would approach it and, you know, there's not a lot of, um, well, I don't want to say that. So basically, the first thing I would do is kind of inventory all the, like, private and public paved areas that are within certain radiuses of the town and the town facilities. Um, I would look at existing studies that have been, have been done when, um, buildings in the area were redeveloped. There's the utilization analysis piece, which is the, the, probably the biggest piece in here where, um, consultant support or an intern or, you know, some help could be, because really you go out for multiple, select board help, um, multiple times a week. And you look at, you know, parking, utilization at, you know, a set interval and, you know, and then, and then from that, you look at like, you know, 10 space blocks. And, you know, are those spaces, are seven of them, seven out of 10 used for the full two hours? You know, you kind of track the timing and the utilization and then you get the rates and turnover and all that. And, and that may be able to be scaled down and that would have to be tailored to like the peak times here. And, you know, you'd pick a time when, um, like, things are really bustling to get like a sense of, um, or, you know, really bustling, but also not like a day when there's a special event, right? So, um, and then there's two different kinds of requirements, right? There's operational requirements, so the fire department, police department, town hall, other entities in this area will have like operational needs depending on staffing. And, and their. Um, and, and their peak times, right? And then there's the zoning requirements, right? And those are not always aligned. Um, and so I do an analysis from both angles there and kind of see like, are there gaps? Um, and just kind of brainstorm ideas for how to gain relief from zoning if needed, or if we need to do way more than zoning, then, you know, generally speaking, that's not the case, but, um, and then kind of looking at the problem identification. So is there a supply problem or is there a parking management problem? Um, or is there a signage problem, or do people not, do people just not know where they can park if they can't find a space right where they need it, right? Um, and so in Reading, when I redesigned the entire downtown parking system, you know, there was no supply problem. It's a management problem, um, and we redid all the regulations, we added in paid parking stations, like a complete overhaul. It took three years. Um, it's still being implemented right now. Um, but basically, you just identify the problem, um, what is the unmet demand? How's it currently being resolved? And what are the echo effects it's having? Like, what workarounds are happening? So, um, what spillover impacts are people stacking? Um, are they having to drive far away to find a spot? Um, and sometimes the creative workarounds that people are doing every day end up being the solution. Because that's like where people's minds are intuitively going when they're looking for parking. And we intuitively do things that are in our best interests, um, and they can make a lot of sense. Um, and that's leading into the exploration of solutions. So, um, just kind of looking at, you know, what is the, the normal behavior of people? Um, are there any other creative solutions? So, um, in Reading, we put together an agreement where the town would lease church parking lots to use for overflow parking during certain times and certain events. Um, and we've worked with those local entities to try to like make that work, and we, we weren't successful with any of them. We had the documents all drafted by town council and ready to go. At the end of the day, none of them joined onto it, um, but it is something that communities have done, it is possible. Churches tend to use their parking lots at like very key, specific times, um, and then they're kind of just vacant pavement the rest of the week. Um, and so, so other entities and institutions like that can offer kind of different solutions. I would, generally speaking, as a planner, I would not want to pave paradise as much as I could. Um, and so I'm probably not going to recommend that, um, if there's another way that things can be managed. Um, and then stakeholder engagement throughout the process, very important. Um, and then working to formulate recommendations, um, to present to the appropriate volunteer boards and committees. And then timeline for implementation and whether there are any capital needs associated with it. So. Did I talk fast enough?
Yeah, that was fast.
To me, I think this, it, it all makes sense, and I think you outlined it really, really well. The only thing that I would request is if we're putting together a study like this, that we ask them to look at the fire and the police needs and operational needs and everything, and, um, you know, have that as a kind of the starting point, and then there's the everything, because I worry that if we expand it to everything, it's going to take much longer. It may be a little bit harder to get it through town meeting. I don't want to have to start all over again and be having this discussion in three years about what are we going to be doing with the police department and the fire department? Um, so not saying let's not look at the whole thing, but let's separate it out into two different things so that we know we have something that is actionable. What is required for the police department? What is required for the fire, the fire department? And how might we address that? Um, if the other things don't happen, right? You know, like, can we keep it contained? Can we do what the, uh, facilities task force was looking at about around behind Green Cemetery? Um, I would just hate to go through this and, and we end up not doing anything at all because parking is the problem.
Right.
Similarly, I would parcel out maybe the work scope, like we were talking about with fire, to say, okay, do that, but then also look at the town hall traffic load and the days that, you know, it, I mean, there's events at a fire station that obviously lots of people are coming, they need to park right away. Police is probably more modelable, like, you have a shift change and kind of know what that is. But here we have these events, right? And, and, uh, particularly council and agings holds a lot of events and gets a fair turnout and wants a fair turnout, so. Um, you know, I think, I think, I don't view that as being a very expensive piece of the study. It's a, it's a number four, it's your number four, and it's not a lot. We should know that answer. Separately to Nathan's point, maybe that doesn't, if it, if that turns out to be a big number that materially changes the solution, then we should separate it, but we should know that data.
Do you have any idea, uh, Julie, what the cost of, of a study that includes at least, um, I mean, the study is more, uh, it's the collection of the data, right? So that would sort of cover through number five? Yeah, and recommendations. Yeah. What do we, do you have any sense of what we're talking about for cost?
Probably between five and 10,000 for a relatively small area in a small town. Um, I don't think it would be a huge amount. I mean, I would, I think I could do a lot of it, honestly. Um, if I had like, you know, all the time in the world.
Some volunteers.
Already started kind of gathering all the documents and looking at the studies and stuff. I mean, there's not a huge amount of paved assets, um, you know, within the radius, right? So. Um.
Yeah.
We can leverage our coal engineers as well.
True, true, yeah.
So, um, this would be something that, uh, would be hard, that, that would be bid on, um, as part of the, the two different, um, RFPs for the police and fire? Or would you do this as a whole separate thing?
I think I would do it separately.
Okay.
Um, just so that one can move forward and parking doesn't like Nathan was saying, like, parking doesn't become the problem. And I mean, I also think like, to that point, um, you would, you would phase it, right? Like, if we got a whole suite of recommendations, we wouldn't have to wait and do them all at once. We would figure out which ones are the most critical to do and kind of phase them in. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I think I would do this separately, but.
Yeah.
And, and building on that, uh, because I was going to ask you that with police and fire. You'd put it out there where people could bid on a part of it or the whole thing, right?
Um.
If TBA wanted to take on the whole thing or JRA, it sounds like.
Yeah, right, I mean, there would be nothing stopping them from responding to, to both, right? And getting selected for both. Um.
I mean, if there's economy of scale of.
Yeah, one firm doing both of them for all of them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, and then, you know, just from a coordination of consultants and timing and making sure that the updated design of TPA is getting to the parking consultant, right? Like, that would be staff coordinating that, so that would take kind of that piece out if you use the same consultant. Um, there's pros and cons, I think, to both.
Yeah, okay. Are we, uh, comfortable with where we are now?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Um, thank you very much, Julie. John, it better be critical because we got to move on.
Far away.
Far, right.
That was saying, so I was saying, I read.
Right, okay, thanks, John. Alrighty, um.
Why we need.
Julie, thank you so much. This has been very helpful.
No, you guys have given me great guidance.
Forward to, uh,
About my, my idea.
Hearing you back, you know, having you back on the 13th of June.
All right, okay.
Good. Okay, and Aubrey, thank you so much for, uh, being, uh, patient here with us as we, um, get into our next topics, but I guess before we do, since Tom is here, do you want a very?
Uh, sure, you can put it up.
Yeah. We're, we're going to just, uh, Aubrey, very quickly put up something, uh, for the local hauler policy, just to see if we can sign off on it, and then, um, Tom can be on his way, unless, of course, you're very welcome to stay for the boards and committees discussion.
I'm with you for this.
Yes.
Um, you're going to share your screen.
Um, Ryan's going to do that, yeah.
That soon.
All right, take a breather, reorient your brain.
Okay, I can walk you through it pretty quickly, I think. So, I mean, anywhere, so the first paragraph, I'm just defining it. Basically, Nathan's point, adding compensation. But I want to clarify that it's providing solid recycling, solid waste disposal from Carlisle residents to Carlisle transfer station. That's it, not to somewhere else, right? So the local private hauler is somebody that takes Carlisle residents' trash, takes it to the transfer station and is compensated in some way. And that's the definition.
To the, yeah, transfer station.
Okay.
Yes.
And, uh, okay, and then again, for clarity, the next sentence, just, okay, if you're going to, you're a private hauler and you're going to take it to the transfer station, you got to do these things, right? So the rest of the, like, one through three, four, there's no change other than making sure that it's capital H hauler or whatever, you know? All of that is the same. Um, and all the way down to little three.
Yeah.
I added that last sentence. Um, and you can read, read the sentence.
Good, okay.
Uh, and then five, I combined six and five because they're basically saying the same thing, which is you can't do C and D or solid waste, I mean, home cleanout. The private local hauler can't do it. And then I added it because I think it's important for the, especially the people who are using third parties because they're physically not able to take it. Just to clarify that, they can, they can take it themselves or they can uh, utilize a third party, but that third party can't take it to the transfer station. That's all we're saying. Right?
To me, yeah.
Okay, and then six went away, replaced by, was the hazardous waste, and I added a new seven. Um, just to clarify that also, if you're a local hauler, you can't take non, just because you're a local hauler, you can't take non-resident stuff and take it to our transfer station.
Isn't that already in there?
No, I didn't see it.
I thought it said resident generated or something.
Well, I know, but I'm. Just saying it clear.
The suspenders.
You can't take, uh, you can't take C and D, you can't take cleanout, you can't take hazardous material.
Okay.
And by the way, you also can't take other people's stuff.
Okay.
That's it.
An important point, so.
Would we have a?
I thought that it did have in there that you could not specifically, that it could not be from out of town.
I didn't see it. Well, I'm happy to know.
First sentence, let's see, actually, Carlisle residents is.
That defines what it is, but.
In what you're saying, which is correct, and that is if somebody took trash out of.
I've qualified as a local hauler, but I, by the way, I've got my friends trashing the load.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
That does cover that case, yeah.
Okay, so just real quickly, and this is, I just always like to look at what could go wrong.
Yeah.
So if I'm moving and I want to clean out my house, and I don't, you know, and I just, I say, hey, Bill Rizzo, can I pay you just to haul stuff? Have I just made him a local hauler and I can't do that?
I wouldn't pay him. I thought about that. I think you'd say, Bill Rizzo, or I do it, like, can I borrow your, can you, can I, can you use your pickup truck and help?
Uh-huh, okay.
I think that's fine. We don't.
Right, okay.
We're not getting into it.
All right, shall we have a motion then to adopt this as amended?
I move that we adopt the policy for use by local private haulers, uh, as amended tonight.
Effective, you want to give the effective date?
What, the effective July 1st, 2023.
Second.
Any more discussion? Thank you, David. Thank you, Tom. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this motion carries unanimously.
Excuse me, but do we have to further vote to amend the town Carlisle transfer station regulations?
Yeah, hold on, Tom. We had two motions in here, right? Uh, we just did the local hauler, yeah, so you.
So I move to amend the town of Carlisle transfer station regulations by changing the following sentence. Use by local commercial haulers is permitted if their service is limited to residents of Carlisle. To use by local commercial haulers is permitted if their service operates in conformance with the policy for use by local private haulers maintained by the Department of Public Works.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously, okay.
Good, good thinking, Kate, thank you.
Okay. Aubrey, thank you so much for joining us. And, um, my suggestion, given the time, is that, um, we go right to the, um, Excel spreadsheet, because I think that'll be the easiest thing to look at. In my packet, it's page 48.
Sure, and I can, uh, share my screen and share that.
It is, yeah. Yeah, this is, the, the updated version was in the packet that Jen sent out again this afternoon. Yeah, and then, okay. Um, Ryan, is there a way to get rid of the, oh. Okay, all right. Um, yeah, so Aubrey, if you would just give a, an overview of what people are looking at, and maybe, um, we'll get, um, if you can, can you move up this, your, on the screen just a tad to get the last lines below?
See if I can, uh.
Quite see the, okay, there you go.
There we go.
Perfect, okay.
So this is an Excel spreadsheet that Barney and I created. Um, so we're presenting this in two parts. One is to show the different boards and committees that exist, uh, in town right now. And we're hoping to help make sure that they're streamlined, that they still make sense, and that the existing, existing boards and committees are getting the support they need. So in order to do that, we need to see where they all are right now. So we put them in four categories. The first is to keep, of course, the second is update, which means we keep it, but they, um, are worth looking at revisiting to see if there's any changes necessary. The third is to delegate to staff, so it'd be more like an advisory, uh, committee. And then the fourth is to eliminate, it's no longer needed. So in the keep category, there are some that are, um, elected, so we wouldn't even touch them anyways, but we still had them on the list as a board or committee to support. Um, so with updating, um, there are a few, um, to look at. Uh, the celebrations veterans committee is included as one. Um, but we need to see if the select board actually approved this merger. Um, they're both, they both connected with me saying that, yes, this merger happened, but I need to have that verification. A few other ones here, um, like the youth commission, um, scholarship advisory committee, just revisiting and seeing how we can better support them. I'm actually going to meet with, um, one of the, uh, head folks for the scholarship advisory committee to see how we can kind of revitalize that group. Uh, the, uh, town governance task, task force, we're looking into, um, making a policy, so that would be reviewed. Well, actually, that would be eliminated, um, in some ways, but it might be worth looking to review it every few years and creating it again.
Well, yeah, just one quick on that, so the town governance task force, um, raised this possibility, right? That we, there's no.
Right.
Specific committee, but that we might want to, um, write a policy that said X number, every X number of years, we would have a review of our governance structures.
Right, which absolutely makes sense. Um.
It doesn't go in the update box, it goes in the eliminate box.
Yeah, that's my error. I meant to, that should have been eliminated, uh, from the update box, because I did move it over to eliminate.
Well, I think, well, I don't know. Um, I'm not unhappy with it being in both places. I think we need to talk about government, governance, and, you know.
That's a separate thing. I mean, you got to put it in one box or another, or you have ambiguity.
Right, so, you know, now that that task is over, you know, it would be out for now until five or 10 years from now. So delegating to staff, there's several that were, what makes more sense to bring more in-house with staff, make it more efficient. Um, so those are the ones included. Um, I, I believe, uh, Ryan and Kim will be leading a lot of these as well, which also makes sense. Um, we've really had a hard time creating an insurance advisory committee outside of staff members, so it'll make sense, and especially since it's, you know, directly impacts staff, it makes sense for the staff to be part of that conversation. And then the eliminate, um, these are ones, um, that are no longer necessary. I did confirm that the dear committee's mission is complete, and, and, and obviously, this was before my time, but it sounded like it was, had to do with bow hunting.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
We would, yeah, we all, we, actually, all of us, except Travis, we're intimately involved with this.
Okay, yeah.
We, we know.
You're well aware.
They didn't complete their work, but their, their time is over, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then there were a couple here that I added on, like, the town building committee and the long-term capital requirements, requirements committee. They are in the bylaw, um, so they would need a bylaw change to remove. I have been told that at least one of them has technically been eliminated, but it's still in the bylaw, so I need to check with the town clerk why that's.
Caps has become a subcommittee of the FinCom, which is where it should have been to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I guess we need a bylaw to, but we need to change the bylaw, so that needs to be handled.
And if it was moved to change it from the bylaw, I want to work with the town clerk to see what we need to do to get that updated. And then as of last night, the personnel board will be removed, so that's already in progress.
And then just, uh, And then just uh, you can probably see it, but the, the column uh, next to each. Board or committee listed shows this current select board liaison and then if, and the staff person that's been assigned to. Be the staff. Support.
Yeah, and that, so, so we went through this, I think, last year, right, and. There's a lot of back and forth. I think that it's important, I think that I created a spreadsheet, which I just couldn't find.
Aubrey has too. Aubrey and I. Thank you.
I think the, it's important for us to continually remind ourselves when we have these lists. When it is, when is it a liaison and when is it a member?
Right, right, right. Right.
And what are the duties and functions of a liaison?
Yeah.
Which we can cover. I think that's part of what we want to cover in the summer.
Yeah, yeah, well, and if, so. Uh, and just to um. The other part of the information in this packet is kind of a draft looking at. The um. The boards and committees defining them, um, describing the. Sort of what current practice is about people getting on a board, uh, and then also some suggestions about how we. Might want to address it going forward, and then also the discussion about the liaisons of what their, what our expectation is of what a liaison does. And we can also clarify then when you're a member, but that's in the, in the um, document. That's a draft that we would hope to discuss. At the next meeting on uh, June thirteenth. So I think tonight um. Uh, we could spend just a little bit of time if people want to. React to this spreadsheet with either suggestions about changes or things to add or. Um, and then also um. Be thinking about uh, liaison preferences since it's going to be the same five of us um. Are going forward for the um, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-four.
Yeah, so we've got some elected ones. We don't have all of them, right? School committees and all that.
And conservation is not elected, isn't it?
No.
Conservation.
Is appointed by us.
Right, it's shown there as elected.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll remove that.
That, that's my mistake, yeah.
The two school committees are.
And, and.
They're not here.
I'm not sure that um, some of these, like the conservation restriction of uh.
Crack.
Cranberry bog thing and the land stewardship should be really clustered under conservation commission. Because they're really subcommittees and appointed by them.
That's true.
That's what I understood.
I, I believe that's right, that they are um.
And they should be.
They should not be listed as.
Their own separate committees. So maybe there's a way Audrey to go back, Aubrey to go back and um. Yeah, put the conscom, make the conscom box bigger and show these, those three as subcommittees.
In fact, I'm, I'm not positive about the conservation restriction advisory committee. I think that's a subcommittee of theirs.
So I don't, I don't want to totally nerd out on you.
Stewardship.
But you appoint the conscom and they do send these to you to appoint to their subcommittees.
I understand, but they are still committees of the, they're some.
Of the non-scope, right?
So I don't consider them really to be.
Subcommittees of your committee.
Yes.
Right.
You still appoint.
Well, right, but appointing is only one part. This is now segueing into the next time's discussion, but. If it's a subcommittee of a committee we appoint is beyond our appointment. Is it the responsibility to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do?
Or is it?
Committee's job or they have to come to us? It seems like it should be the committee's job, right? So. I kind of agree with, hey, I mean, the nuance of whether we appoint or not is separate issue. I think what we're mainly trying to get to. I think we're trying to, first of all, I think it's great. You guys did a nice job. Secondly, I think where we're trying to get to are two different things. One is. If there's things we don't need and things we need to change and things we need to delegate, let's do that, clean it up. And secondly, then, the ones that are left. You know, what is our role in overseeing versus somebody else's role?
Yeah.
And I think that's.
Yeah.
A great discussion for next time, and that would be part of it.
Yeah, and with conscom, just to remind us, you know, when we, when we talked about liaisons for this current year. Is when we, Travis gamely volunteered to be the liaison to conscom and then those three and had those additional. Yeah.
Did you go on it?
What?
They have me.
I have not. I've gone to conscom.
Yeah. But, and I think that our thinking was the same, that it would mostly be fed up to conscom and then to the liaison, but yeah, we can come back to that.
Yeah, I like that idea of putting them.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I also read in your text, just.
Yeah.
On the sort of those topics, the. I saw two things that I just want to clarify. One is. Kind of, if I, I'm going to paraphrase here, but a task force has a defined. You know, period and objective in a final report and is subject to open meeting.
Yeah.
And a working group. Is also, you know, in, not a permanent thing, but does not. Quiet with open meeting.
Well, because, well, because we're, I think this would be um. I guess a policy and understanding, we would, we would have that. Working groups are going to be, we, this is where we would ask. The town administrator that we would like information around the following or. This is this problem, we want you to um, come back to.
So I, so I think what we're looking to do is codify the names going forward, so legally, it doesn't matter what. The name is, it's about who delegates it. So if Ryan creates it, then it's not subject to open meeting law. Right, it, but the select board creates it, then it is, you know, because they're open uh, to open meeting law. So I think what we're looking to do is make it so it's clearly defined. Uh, it hasn't necessarily been the case up until this point, so by giving definition, then we will know. Without having to dig.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And what would the cranberry bog thing be called then in, in its current state?
Task force.
It's a task force.
You would rename it task force under this new convention.
And there was another point I wanted, it, it also, the text said something to the effect that. A non-select board. An elected board that's not, an elected board, not the select board, cannot create its own. Task force and things, that's was in the text, like.
I think you've garbled that.
I may have garbled.
Or we, or we may have goofed. I don't believe.
The creation of a new board or committee task force?
Yeah. I gotta find it now.
Yeah, it's on page uh, four and uh, in the packet, it's page forty-six. At least the latest packet.
Which committees?
Uh, I don't see it under there. The creation of a new board committee or task force.
The select board has the sole authority. Number one, has the sole authority to create a new, non-elected town board committee task force.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct.
But what's maybe not clear is.
The very first page, first page, yeah. Page one, I'm sorry.
So I'm on page forty-six, which is.
He's one of the.
Which is, okay. Creation of new board committee task force, et cetera. So I guess my question is, an existing elected body like the. Planning board, the health board, the school board.
Yeah.
Can they also not create? Task forces and.
Yeah, well, they're not under our purview, so.
Not, yeah, I get that, but.
I don't know what they're.
So I think that, I guess, this probably may have came from Ethan.
Deer committee.
Yeah.
I mean, not the deer committee, the deer tick committee.
Yeah, so I would just question that sentence and maybe get clarification.
I'm fairly certain.
Yes.
Then I don't like that.
I like it if it's true.
A elected body that's not the select board, not the executive for the town, can make a subcommittee, but they cannot make a new committee.
Right, but can they make a task?
They could make. They could name their subcommittee a task force, yes.
So I, again, I would say. This item one of. Creation of new board committee. Should clarify that sentence.
So you're saying that they can create. A committee or a task force under them, but they can't create a committee. For the town.
Yeah, this must make further up. Page, oh, is it?
Yes.
Oh, here it is. Oh, gotcha, okay. You want to make it.
Well, this implies that we're the only ones who could create.
A new.
I don't know that. I don't think it should be true. I think if.
Well, what this overall thing says is that um, you know, this is all governing, non-elected. Um, boards and committees. And that elected boards and committees. Can do their own separate thing, but Ryan, what are you saying? That if um. A.
Yeah, it's.
Well, whatever, we'll come back to this, so we need some clarification. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I had my school committee hat on, like, you know, I'd say, well, no, you can't tell me that I can't.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. But the school committee is elected.
Yeah, just saying it's a sole authority.
Right.
The sole authority is the only two words on.
Okay. Okay.
It is, it's both, because they can't create a new committee. They can't commit, create at the level that that says. Can't make anything new.
Then eliminate.
You could name your subcommittee a task force, but that's just.
I would maybe say.
Just being rude, so don't do it.
Like where it's sole authority to create a new, non-elected town board slash committee, period. However, other elected. Boards have the authority to create subcommittees and task forces.
Okay.
Accurate.
Well, and, and non-elected because. They're uh.
No, the non-elected, I think, have to come to us.
Before they can do a subcommittee, if they need to, let's say, okay, this, the uh, housing trust. Asked two people to go and, you know.
Okay, then stay that way.
You know, well, this called a subcommittee. Soon as two people go somewhere else, it's called something.
And it's subject to open meeting.
Subject to open meeting.
So may, okay, so maybe just leave it at.
You have to.
Take off task force to put a period there and then you're. Saying that we're the only ones who can create. At the level of a border committee.
Correct.
Non-elected. Uh, everyone else can do whatever else they. That's, I'm playing with that. That would be fine.
But it does suggest, I suppose, we should say something about subcommittees somewhere in here, right, which we don't.
So I, I would just want to, I just want to point out, because at some point, somebody may be watching this streaming or, or something like that. We kept bringing up, is it subject to open meeting law or is it not subject to open meeting law? We're not doing this because we want to figure out.
I agree.
We're not, we're not doing this because we want to figure out how to get around open meeting law. We're just trying to. Clearly define.
Right.
What it is.
Right.
I'd also just like to say one other thing, when there's multiple people talking, like, I was just talking. People can't really hear because the mics pick it up, so I think it's best to have one person talk at a time.
It's a good practice anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
To add to Nathan's point just quickly, I was looking at the bylaws, um, or, or town, or general bylaws here. And a lot of these things are already spelled out, and how do we, are we going to change the bylaws as part of this?
Yeah.
I mean, because some of these things, the long-term capital requirements committee is spelled out under section three point.
She said.
Yes.
That's why it's noted on.
Only, well, that's why it's on eliminate and we have to go to town meeting for that, but you know, a lot of these are in here, I, I mean, all of them.
Yeah.
So we will change the bylaw.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's good practice anyway, unless there's some reason to have it in the bylaw, to have it more in, in a policy. In a policy area. And.
Well, they're all. Three, yeah.
Um, okay, uh, any other uh, general? Um, comments or feedback or? Um, and Nathan, I have noted that we want to look at um. What you and Kate did. I know, Aubrey, you and I looked at that, didn't we? We got that, I'm pretty sure.
Which part?
You know, the, the, the thing that Nathan and Kate did um. That was trying to sort out who was on what committee and their terms and.
Oh, yeah, that's definitely been a heavy, heavily relied upon.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go back and look at that too and see if.
You don't want to miss out on like, what's, you know, we're going to define what a liaison is. There's a real difference between somebody who's a liaison and somebody who's.
Who's a member on it, right? Right. Yeah, so for example, Aubrey, for me, at the um. CPC committee, the community preservation committee, I'm not the liaison, I'm actually the member representing the select board on it.
Right, no, that's a good point.
Yeah.
I need to talk through kind of like what that means, because historically, like when I was on the planning board. Historically, if you were a selectman, you were only appointed for one year. You know, i- if they have three-year terms, it wasn't you were on for three years. And we just need to work, work through that.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the thing that I found is being the member of the ARPA. Uh, committee, uh, is the, you know, kind of the conflict of interest or.
Right.
Twice for things.
Right.
So I've been recusing myself, so that's another thing that I think we need to talk about, kind of.
Yes.
Clear on, right, so.
When do you.
Chat when.
Yeah.
And where.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Is it that you can't? Is it that you can't vote on it as a select board member, or is it that you can't have another person? Who is on that committee and have the discussion with them during a board of selected meeting, unless it's a public meeting for that party as well?
That, both.
Ryan. Is it, it's the second one? So Kate can vote as a board of selectmen meeting on, on an ARPA issue. But she just can't have a discussion with.
Say last night.
Voting, voting is deliberating.
Sorry?
Voting is deliberating.
No. But only if she's doing that with Scott in the room, right?
So two weeks ago, when he came, right, and we had the ARPA recommendations and Kate recused herself. That's what she should have done, you're saying, because they're both on the committee.
Just to be ultra safe.
Yeah.
Because we hadn't called a joint meeting.
Correct. Right.
Harvard have been called a working.
And if I just given it as a liaison report. I could have voted it.
You know, we've been staff run by end, by our definition.
I'm sorry, task force. If we were doing it now, we would have called it an ARPA task. Defined in period.
It doesn't matter. I mean, well, ugh, I still couldn't deliberate.
Getting back to the question because.
Yes, Nathan.
Not clear on what my, on what the answer is. So Kate's on ARPA, Scott Trio is on ARPA. Where we are deciding on the ARPA funds and we're going to have that vote. Scott is not in the room. Why can Kate not vote as a board of selectman member? He can't, okay.
When, when they, the member's not in the room.
Right, it's. Okay, so it's, it's only if there's another, okay, and that would be very limiting.
I'm guessing if you went back in the past, you wouldn't put a select board member on the ARPA. And then you wouldn't, and the ARPA committee would just be making a recommendation, then you can all deliberate and vote. It's, you know, we're almost through the, the ARPA period, so.
Okay, um, any other comments, suggestions? Changes?
On, and then this memo?
Either the, either this, well, the spreadsheet. Uh, but if you had a chance to look at the um, outline, the, you know, we're going to discuss this more fully at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I'd like to do that more next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot. Lot of stuff in here.
Right.
Especially things about reappointment and how you, how we recruit and.
Right.
Onboarding, you know, all that stuff.
So I suggest for efficiency next time, if you could circulate or Aubrey could circulate this in Word. And we could send comments back to Aubrey, so that we can get a consensus of the things we, otherwise it'll take us out and out.
It's a good idea. Aubrey, anything more you want to um, get input on?
Well, I just want to note, you know, this is perfect when it goes hand in hand with, you know, my plan to, you know. Have more training for all the boards and committees, making sure they are following open meeting law, so this opens that conversation and making sure that this makes sense. And the questions that everybody's asking is exactly why we need to be looking at this. So I think it's perfect timing.
Right. Right.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you, Aubrey, for your work on this. Yes. Alrighty, um, let's move on to the PA report.
Okay, I will be concise, as they say. So IT consolidation improvements. I am meeting with ThriveTech tomorrow, actually now, which is new to this report, to go over, um, a first draft of the IT replacement and capital plan, which would dovetail nicely into capital planning this summer and also matches the vote last night for the funding for this. So we have the funding. Now we'll have the plan, and I'll make sure we bring that, too, so you understand how that is going to progress. Uh, big updates from Aubrey's World in Human Resources. The, the biggest one is, is Chris Guines from our Board of Health Department has given her resignation for, uh, family reasons. Uh, nothing to do with the town. So she says, so the, um, the hole that she leaves, the work that she's done, the stability that she provides, um, that side of the building is immense, and I, I personally will miss. So usually I'm like fired up and walking around there, and she calms me down. So that's gonna be a, a personal thing I missed. And we met with the Board of Health Chair today to talk about the recruitment and future of that position. So that is on its way. You appointed a, a laborer to the DPW position tonight. And then we are starting the internal hiring process for the foreman position, which we'll try to recruit from our talented, heavy equipment operators as we look to place our next leadership position. And then Aubrey was working with, um, the, some of the council and aging members today to interview the social services manager position in, in Carroll. So that, that is on its way. Town meeting has been exhausted in terms of talking about it. So I'll move on to, uh, just briefly mention that, that Kelly and I are building a quarterly financial report that'll become part of the FY24 cycle. And, um, I'm gonna give you a draft in June. It'll be late, right? It'll be third quarter, but it's more to see, is this a useful tool and what do you, what do you want from it? For procurement, uh, didn't have time to talk about it with Julie here, but she started her GIS procurement. Uh, we met with many, um, representatives from, on the land use side who are interested in GIS, to include the, the assessing director. And, uh, this is gonna be a really interesting and valuable tool. For those who aren't familiar with, with GIS, um, it's been discussed here. Layers have been built, but it's never been put on a, in a application where you can access it. The public can access it. And then we're talking about how to build local layers. Um, I've been learning a lot during this process. Julie is doing a good job marshaling, as, as you can tell, she does a good job with that generally. And we should have some good news from you on the GIS front at the end of, at, at your next meeting, because we're not meeting for a bit. The, you know this already, but the road repair projects for, uh, East and Rutland Street and Pine Brook Road and Patch Meadow all came in. They came in under, under what we expected, which is good, four hundred and six thousand. They should start the second week in June, takes advantage of the RAP funding, and builds a good base for us to talk about horizontal engineering in the summer.
So I got one question, which is school buses. That's still, I mean, I realize why you have to do it then, but school, school's still in session. The second week. It's probably not in session the third week. Have you talked to the school about the bus routes?
I, I will, but this is a funding issue.
I understand. I'm not sure when last day of school is. Probably too late. So it's gonna be right at the tail end, though, and they're gonna have to figure that out, right? Like, if kids live along those roads, are you shutting the road or shutting half of it?
They do half and half.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then this is an action item for you. The recreation van, they no longer need it. They don't do the summer swim program, which is really the main use of that van, is they don't want it anymore. They talked to all the departments or several departments, the school does want it. So by statute, you would have to declare it surplus and then give it to the schools. If you're amenable to that, we could, we could use a vote, and then I can make that happen.
Sure.
And we move it.
About the roads.
Yeah.
I hate to ask this question, but is Patch Meadow Lane at Allen Road?
Yes.
It was not.
Well, there's an extension at the end, which is not, which has got three, more houses on it than the road itself has.
I'm sure we wouldn't be paving.
Gary's last gift.
Um, why don't we do that motion right now? It's in our packet. So somebody wanna...
About it before.
Oh, on the van?
On the van.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this isn't emergent. We don't have to vote it tonight, but if you're ready, we can.
Right. So, you know, in, in your email earlier this week, you said you were gonna talk to Jim about, you know, what the need was. You know, I'd really love to know what that need was, um, you know. So we have a van that, that isn't needed. We transfer it to the school. Now we're gonna have to replace it. We're gonna have to maintain it. I'd really like to know what the need of that van is, um, versus just getting rid of it.
Mm-hmm.
It just, it adds up, right?
I'll retract my request, and I'll bring it back on the 13th. I think that's right. So we'll move. Get you more info.
Do it, we'll take, yeah, we're just...
Yeah. That's a good point. Once they have it, now they, then they, got it. Yeah, I was gonna say.
The second pumper truck. Now we're gonna have to replace it.
Right. Right. Yeah. Good point. You're right.
All right. So, um, the, the board is aware that, um, our Bingham Road and Palmer Way residents have for a while been, been requesting sidewalk extension to Palmer Way. Uh, they've had discussions in the past. This is part of the complete streets program and has gone through the traffic and safety and pedestrian committee as well at some point. So we did walk this as a group, um, all interested parties and Barney on behalf of the select board. And, uh, we asked niche, our on, niche, our on-call engineers to look at it. So in order to design or to get a, what would be movement towards a design and construction, there's a nine thousand dollar proposal, and then the range for the project would be a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's, that needs to be part of your calculus. I'm not asking you to do anything for that, except giving you that information in the study for you to look at. Um, this resident group does wanna come to you and, and ask for this, and it does need to be put into the bigger capital picture. But this is our due diligence to inform that later discussion.
So the pathway committee, um, had extension priorities? Is this that next priority or?
Which you will.
Or is, yeah, I mean, it's like...
It's not clear to me where it fits in the, in the priorities. Not that it's not a priority, but where it fits.
Right.
Yeah.
So we would...
I think we should probably look at that, at what their priorities were.
Where we spend money.
Or else we're gonna be opening up, opening up for everything. Like, I love it to go down two twenty-five towards my house.
Yeah. Do we have this filed anywhere, or is it in somebody's home computer?
Uh, Pathway was, was before I got involved in town, so I don't know.
Well, Belanger, I think.
Yeah, Deb Belanger.
And she's out of town. So the question is, did she find it?
I did talk to Luke about it. He's on the, the traffic, traffic committee. Um, that's one of the committees that you need to either revamp or need to figure out a different way.
Yeah.
On our list, there's traffic on them.
Yeah. Yeah.
It, it has a purpose as long as you purpose it, but right now it's kind of in limbo.
Yeah. Anyway, okay.
Right. We should go back and get that, try to find that study.
Find that study, that would be great.
Actually, Julie should be having all that information.
Right.
Gathering it for me. So this is, this is part of my effort to use the information, and we can, it'll come up again, but you've heard about it and can, and adjust it. Uh, along those lines, Aubrey put together some comparable towns for, for you to use. It's in a spreadsheet. Again, I'm not looking for you to action this tonight, but I would like it to be on an agenda. So this would allow us to solidify a list so that we don't have to keep going to you and saying, who do you wanna compare it to? Or when we give you a list of, of comp towns, you don't say, well, that's not, that's not a town that we want to comp to. So this would be a, it doesn't mean we can't get others, but it's just a way to standardize our information.
We should, it's also not one size fits all. Like, if you're talking about school-related things, towns that share high schools and regional schools would be thing that you'd need to have versus some other things that wouldn't matter whether, you know.
Yes.
Right.
By the way, Lincoln does have a regional school. Yes, uh, and it says no here, so.
For, for our discussion next time, would you be able to send this out as an Excel spreadsheet, so I can add a column?
You want Word, you want Excel?
And Excel, done. It can be Word if it's already in Word.
Nope, you said Excel.
Electronically.
PDFs are just...
I have it in Excel, so I'll just send it.
Yeah.
All right. So this I am asking for your, um, at least consideration for an action. So, uh, niche, again, was, um, our on-call engineer was, was accommodating. So what I'm looking to do is to prioritize road maintenance in town. And I think the starting point for prioritization of roads is the conditions of the roads as evaluated by a third party. So, um, I asked them to, to quote out a study. There still would be some negotiation with this study, um, and some of the things I want, like a GIS layer included as part of our conversation today. And then, um, some other, some other priorities on the deliverables. But this would be out of chapter ninety funds. Right now, we have about a million in funds. We are just dedicated four hundred and six thousand to this road repair. So this would deplete, if we did this sixty-six thousand dollar study, about half, not accounting for what we would get next year, the two fifty-two-ish that we would get. So what this would do would inform a study, a long-range capital plan that we're planning this summer, so that we can add his hori- his horizontal engineering to the vertical discussions we're having with buildings, and then add that to capital planning from the departments. So you would have the MFC in the buildings, you would have your, your horizontal as worked on by Jim and I, and then you would have your, um, capital plan that we're working on with the finance committee. So I think this is really important. It is expensive, but I think it's a, a ten-year investment on, on what you're gonna do so that you can, uh, deal with folks coming in the squeaky wheels who say, my road's the worst. You can actually say, we have some data to decide whether or not that's true.
So I moved that this select board authorized the town administrator to engage with niche engineering for the purpose of building comprehensive road management plan with a cost not to exceed sixty-six thousand dollars.
Second. And I'll just say under the discussion that, um, it's also helpful for people to know that their, their street is on the list, you know, in what order. It rationalizes the, the decision, because, I mean, otherwise, honestly, I just grew down Patch Meadow, and I was wondering why it was up on the list, you know? And I, I'm not even saying I'm comparing it to my road. I'm just, just period, you know, it's... Yeah. Okay. Abby, did you wanna comment? Oh, I thought you leaned.
Directly related to this. Actually, let's do this vote, and then I can add the different things that's not...
Okay. All right. Any other comment? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So the other thing I was gonna say is that I think we need to codify our requirement that there be some kind of a bond, like, in writing codify that there's some kind of a bond anytime a road is being opened up. Because I, you know, every time I drive down Concord Road and my car's going like this, I'm reminded of that nightmare that happened.
Yeah.
From when that road was dug up after we had just paved it.
It is codified. It is in our, um, policies. And it's in the DPW policies that a bond, it's got to be posted. It just wasn't being enforced, enforced.
So the next thing I'm gonna be coming to with maybe next year is, is culverts and other things under the road. Prioritizing those, so that they can be overlaid with layers on GIS, so you can see. One of the reasons why Patch Meadow is included is because you get a discount for area paving. And so it's probably not as bad as this road, but it's bad enough, and it fits into the, into the money equation. Same thing with, um, you know, if you have two bad culverts in a road over here, then that project might prioritize over another. Even though if you were driving it, you would say this isn't bad. But that's data you need to make these decisions. You can't just guess.
Yeah.
I think, you know, hopefully, hopefully for this study, um, that we just voted on, they will talk to the utility companies and find out what is their roadmap, so that they're not coming in and digging up the road we just did, like what happened on Concord Road. Um, it was literally like a month later, and they did, you know, it was, and it was the entire length that we had just paved. Um, it was like remarkable how it could have been that perfect.
Yeah.
I agree. And that's not what we're going for.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else in your report?
Just, uh, three quick, uh, staff recognition. So you all know the work that the CCA group, working group did. I'd like to recognize all of them. Uh, Sue Thomas in particular, on the staff side, also at the same time was working on our Green Communities Grant and turned that in on time. So that is excellent work on the sustainability side. I'd like to recognize Sue, uh, Jen for her work on the annual report. So the annual report is up online, is complete. That takes a ton of time and effort, uh, and Jen handles that for us every year. And very few people feel it, except when you get an email that says you haven't done what she said you're supposed to do on time. That's the only reason why you know it's the annual report time. And lastly, Kelly, I gotta get this right, earned her Massachusetts Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association, MMAA, coveted accounting certification. This is really difficult to do, especially while you're meeting all the budget needs of town meeting and, you know, running accounting for town. So she didn't, she said she didn't expect to pass. We all knew that she would. She did pass in March. And now we have what we already knew, a certified accountant who is, um, is continuing to get her certification.
All right, awesome.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thing is, can she say it three times fast?
The MMAA?
Double M, triple A.
That's like CPA for municipal.
Yes.
Yeah. We're passing along some cemetery deeds we need to sign. Uh, more, Ryan, or are you? Yeah. So, um, yeah, let's, we got the, um, draft agenda for the thirteenth, which we should take a quick look at. And, um, just as a reminder, so tonight is my last meeting as the chair on the thirteenth. The plan is that, um, Ryan will convene the meeting up through the, um, second item, where we have the select board reorganization, and he'll take nominees for the chair, and we'll have that, make that decision, and then whoever that new chair is will then, um, conduct the rest of the meeting. But this was, um, the, what, what David and I and Ryan came up with for the content of that meeting on the thirteenth. Maybe what we should say, given the hour, that if people have input into this, um, suggestions or changes, uh, you wanna just send them to Ryan? Rather than try to talk about it tonight?
You have the public safety facilities to put...
Input into what, Ryan?
This agenda, for the thirteenth, yeah. Agenda comments or...
Public safety, so we have to squeeze that in.
Uh, circle back to public safety.
Oh, well. Well, we'll figure that.
Something has to move to the twenty-seven.
Okay. Um, then, uh, let's go on, then the, um, financial policies. Our, our, Deb, people had a chance to review. David did the word smithing.
Two-word change.
Yeah, and, uh, I think we should be able to approve this if...
You have to eliminate the title that says SDM Mark.
Yeah, but the, uh, all right, so under, uh, it's sixty-nine in our packet, the motion, it's item ten. I move the select board vote to adopt the financial reserve policy as presented on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. You have a second?
As amended.
And as amended tonight. Yeah, and as, as amended on, then, on, well, May, um, ninth.
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 I would, it'd be ten.
That's true.
I was backing that.
Okay. So the motion is as presented on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and amended, uh, tonight, May ninth, twenty-three? Okay. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Cemetery deeds. Just before you go on, I just want, one comment is like, I, I hope that we do have some sort of a, um, a policy about, you know, debt capacity and things like that coming through.
That, yeah, it's one of the last ones.
Okay. Okay, cemetery deed requests on, uh, age seventy-two. There are three of them. I move the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery, described in deed number seven ninety-four as lot D, section one eighty-seven, graves one and two, to Lynn Stays Brady, and I hope I pronounced that halfway carefully, directly, one oh nine Church Street, Carlisle, Mass. And that we transfer land, uh, in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery, described in deed number seven ninety-five as lot D, section four oh nine, graves one, two, and three, to Wang and Sharon, Wang of one fifty-three Arrowhead Lane, Carlisle, Mass. And deed number seven ninety-seven, uh, select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground, Green Cemetery, uh, as lot D, one eighty-seven, grave three, to Diane Stack, one sixty-two Toffett Road, and accept the return of cemetery deed number seven, six seventy-four, and a hundred payment, dollar payment in exchange. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, I'm confused by the last one from Diane Stack.
Swapping, doing the change of COs.
Oh, she owes us more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't spend it all in one place.
When I, yeah, no, I'm just trying to... Sounded like she was just trading one for another, so I'm just, was wondering why there was a...
It's in the, it's in the fingers, man.
Okay. I mean, it's coming in the cemetery deed on here.
Yeah, it's somewhere else. I saw it.
Let's vote on it. Um, any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, right, and these... Okay, it's because we raised the cost. Yeah, uh, right, since then. Time that she bought it. Yeah. Okay, and, um...
Just because it's timely, Madam Chair. So if you did create something like a cemetery group, you could delegate that, ask to them.
Right.
Would that be a, a town, see, there'll be a town-side job, or does it have to be?
Just saying, you can delegate some of these things.
Right.
Nice.
Right. All right. Anyone have a liaison report? Um, all right. Anyone have a liaison report they want to give tonight?
Missed my, I missed my meeting. I'm very sorry, Brian, on Monday morning.
Okay.
I, I did want to mention this because clerical, I'm on the, the things that Barney signs, you know, for the, all the, the warrants.
Cemeteries, oh, the warrant.
Warrant, uh, I've noted as select board clerk on those. I don't know if that's the case or not.
I am the clerk.
That's what I thought, but. Just so.
We didn't, we didn't elect Travis the clerk as the new board member?
Yeah. Nope, I'm the clerk.
Well, that's right. That's why it was a discrepancy.
Huh.
Yeah.
So all those warrants invalid.
I.
I'll back the money. Okay.
No, because they don't all have to be signed by everyone.
No, I just sign them. Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Um, we have no minutes tonight and, uh, anybody, uh, that is still on the line, uh, like to offer any input at this early hour of the evening. All right. Seeing none. Uh, thank you all for staying with us. And, uh, I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm moved.
All right. The meeting is adjourned at ten fifteen PM. Thank you all.
There's a light weights. I'm ready to go.